Hey everybody, this is a poker coaching study session. We're studying cash games and we're gonna study small blind versus button. Let's go.
Hit on share button.
Command shift S in Mac and control shift S in PC.
If you all want, I have a hand in this situation that I butchered so badly, I can share what Matt and Joey's done.
Excellent. That's a good one.
Who wants to start off, be the first victim?
Do we wanna look at some ag reports maybe?
No, let's fail for, let's, let's do five minutes of being wrong.
Oh. Okay, sure.
Could I, could I, could I start?
Yeah, Louis, 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 you start, we'll go fat. We won't only do five minutes, but let's be wrong for a little bit, see what our intuition tells us.
Um, I think this is a fold, but a sliver of a raise. Maybe like five percent, 10%.
Right, you rolled a 99.
Yeah, uh, yeah, roll to 99, yeah, free bet.
Alright.
Full in or twelve?
I mean, twelve, but I think it's mostly fold, like almost pure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nailed it.
Yep, good, and now you're in it.
Yeah. Now, now, now I'm not. We are bluffing, so we fold. Are we just doing, are we, is it just 100 deep or there gonna be some 200 deep as well?
Uh, no, this is set up at 100.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Cause that, that's what we most will.
Yeah, I, I buy in for 100 if I play live anyway.
Yeah.
I don't want to be, yeah. Oh, are we looking at the ranges?
Now that we had it, let's take a peek at what the responding to four bet range looks like. So we have no small four bets. If we're gonna four bet, we're shoving. Like the calling range, the red hands that he has calling are kind of logical in a way.
Yeah. I think against non-GTO population, those tens are, are probably not profitable for four big blinds. I don't call, I don't know that they're suicidal, but I don't believe that those are four big blind profit for jamming the tens there. I think they don't have that, I don't think they have enough four bet bluffs.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to look at what the four bet range is in this configuration. I think that it's pretty wide. Significantly wider than what population's gonna be.
I doubt it's that wide. Oh, it's kinda got queen ten, I'm not doing now.
Yeah, I don't think you're seeing this, I don't think you're seeing this ace, seven, eight, ace, eight, ace, nine very often. I don't think you're seeing the queen nine very often.
Thoughts behind the shoving tens there?
Because it's protected by ace, ace, king and ace queen?
Interesting. I, I three bet more the wheel aces than the ace nine, the ace eight, maybe that's wrong. I mean, four bet.
Well, I think.
Yeah, the tens balance ace, king and ace queen.
Yeah.
Do you actually do this?
No.
I don't.
It never occurred to me to do that.
Yep.
I think a lot of people shove ace king off.
Yeah.
Are you talking about the shove or this four bet?
The shove. Right? Is that what you're asking about Derek?
Yeah, yeah, cause that, this is like so far away from the way that I play.
What would you, what's your?
Derek, your mic is really low, I'm having troubles hearing you.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it up, okay?
Now, that's too much, somewhere between those two.
Okay, how's that?
So Derek, do you have, do you have a four bet shove range here? Are you shoving anything for 100 big blinds over this, I mean a five bet shove? No, this is a four bet shove. You've been three bets from the big, from the small blind.
In the games that I play, people three bet kings.
Right.
And aces, like, 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 some people like when they, when they five bet, it's always, always aces.
Right, so you've been three bet here. My question is this. When, do you ever shove any hand for 100 big blinds when you get a small blind raise to about 12?
Um, like the games that I play are so passive.
So no.
That people three bet aces and kings.
Right, so you're.
So, so like, things are so, so off GTA, GTO that um, I have, I'm basically playing terrible.
No, no, I'm asking, no, I'm asking a different question here. I'm not saying, I'm not accusing you of being wrong, I'm saying, in your game, when you're playing against most of your opponents, obviously there's, there's a crazy person, you're gonna play differently, but against most of your you've got, you know, somebody raises the button, you three bet them in the small, I'm sorry, you raise the button, you do that wide. Somebody three bets you from the small blind. You've got some calls, you've got some folds, you've got some four bet raises. Do you have any four bet shoves where you just shove it all in for four bets?
Hmm, no, I don't, well, no, no, that's not part of my game.
Good enough, then that's a very reasonable strategy. Jonathan Little talks about strategies where you just don't have a four betting range or you don't have a five betting range. But in that case, then you should absolutely not do this. The idea is, if you've got a four betting, if you've got a four bet shove range, then you want it to have some bluffs in it. Because it's, because if it doesn't, they can play perfectly by folding to all your four bets.
Right.
And, but, but if you don't have the four, but, so the same thing's gonna be true for your four bet non-shove range, is you wanna have some bluffs in it. And those are more reasonable. I mean, if you look at the non-shoves here, you're gonna feel okay with a lot, with a lot of these raises, you know? The queen nine is, you know, the queen nine is a bluff, your ace five suited is a bluff.
Like, I'm thinking that maybe my game's bad because the other day, I raised, like someone opened under the gun with opened under the gun and I was under the gun plus one and I had aces, so I three bet them and then they folded Jack's face up.
It's not bad. What it means is, what it means is now that you know he'll fold Jack's face up, it's not a bad idea to do that to him with ace five suited.
Yeah, yeah.
I also wouldn't take this.
Then it made me think that I hadn't three bet anyone this session. So maybe my game like is too passive and you know what I'm saying?
Well, yeah, so, so, so as we go through more of the spots, you'll look and see how many of the three bets, especially the three bet bluffs you do or don't have. And I will bet you that soon after implementing more three bet bluffs, after your win rate goes down because you're gonna play your bluffs badly, you know, you're gonna lose money at first when you make that adjustment. But very soon after that, I think your win rate's gonna go up. I think that a three betting, that a wider three betting strategy than the other people at your table is going to be profitable. That's what I think.
Do you ever play online?
Yep, yep, I play online.
I have a recommendation for you that I had a coach have me do before. Um, play in a cash game. Maybe move down to the states if you have to.
Mm-hmm.
Because you gotta play with money, you don't mind losing.
Okay, I have money, I don't mind losing.
Free flop. Do not call any bets. Either raise or fold.
Okay.
You can make an exception with the but, maybe on the button or in the big blind.
Okay.
But play a whole session without calling any bets. Either raise or fold.
Is that just pre-flop or just?
Just pre-flop.
Okay, just pre-flop, okay.
And feel free to adjust your ranges. You don't have to, you don't have to raise everything that you wanted to call, you can fold things too.
Right. No call, no calls except on the button and the big blind. Under circle.
I'll take that as a homework assignment and I'll report back next week, okay?
You wanna see a hand that you wanna play that you never would have three bet before, you're like, you know what, I wanna put and then you force yourself to have to three bet it and just see how things go.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll do that and then we'll report back.
Be amazed how many people don't really fight back at you once you three bet.
Yeah. And, and here's the hands that, here's some of the hands that Joe, that
They may call.
Yeah. He's, Joey's talking about hands like Jack ten suited that plays well after the flop and you thought, well, I can call and see if I hit it, three bet that. Joey's talking about hands like, um, six, seven suited sometimes. That you go, I can call.
Five, whatever, yeah.
Yeah, it's five suited, do it.
I think mid-pocket pairs too, pocket eights, that's what I wanna call.
Do it. Pocket sixes, do it. Alright, and then report back next week. Uh, did you have anything else you wanna look at on this analysis before we go to the next hand?
Yeah, I, I, I only three bet unless it's, I'm on the bottom.
Yeah.
Or, or big blind.
Yeah.
But I'm still kinda new to cash, so that's what.
By the way, that strategy Louis is, is perfectly, is perfectly solver approved, that's a perfectly.
Yeah, I mean, I'm playing six max zoom, so it might be a bit different.
Oh, zoom, zoom is, zoom is a great place to have, to have a three better fold strategy. Cause people fold a lot in zoom because they get a, they get a hand coming up, they don't need to fight.
Yeah, I, I try and expand a bit on the button just because people are like not already, they're already gone.
Yeah.
So I actually raise a bit wider than GTO on the button, cause like people have already fast forwarded a lot of the time.
Yep, that's great.
Alright, next hand. Uh, yeah, free, I mean, we're gonna free bet every, everything, so. Hmm. You have a check?
Think we, I think we still bet a lot because this is just so good for our range.
I think it's like a, is it not like a bet big or check kinda board?
No, it's definitely a bet board for our range, I think.
He was talking, he was talking about the size.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, B66, that's not an option. Um, I mean, my hand's so nutted, I might actually go for a small bet like 33%, but I don't know, I think this is mostly a big bet or checkboard. Try, try, try eight big blinds.
I think you may be right with the big bets on this board. I'm not sure though. Yeah, there's some.
And some tiny. Look at that bet.
See the B20?
Yeah.
This is probably a board where you have all these ranges of bets. So your better hands is gonna mix somewhere, all of these in it.
I mean, I wanna keep his bluffs in, so I'm cooling.
Anybody else three betting?
I am.
I'm going 47.5.
Yeah, you, you get it, yeah, three bet here.
Yeah, I'm clear.
Really?
Yeah, he's got the set of eights or he has like the queen, um, queen, jack, spade, you know, anything with the, the broadway flush draw, drawn to the queen of spades. He's not folding anyway, you got top two pair, you're not drawing dead, so yes.
I think generally we call because his raise size was very large and we're blocking what he's claiming to have.
Well, he doesn't have ace queen from what we looked at the ranges, cause he's four banned, huh?
So I think we call here a lot.
Yeah, I think we cool, keeping some bluffs.
I mean, we never fold in, personally. There's merit to both in my opinion.
Oh, definitely.
You're out of position, you're out of position as well, don't forget that.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's why you wanna maintain your advantage because you're out of position. There's no need for you to try to catch a scary card on, on the turn, you got a top two pair.
Exactly, exactly, with the spades, 100%.
I mean, I think I'd prefer to go like shove it in with like kings or eights than ace king.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, for sure.
Then maybe like queen, jack suited as a bluff, maybe.
Yeah, queen, jack, spades, for sure, I like it.
I think the challenge with just calling here is if we call, are we planning on leading the turn or checking the turn?
Uh, free call, we're gonna check, check and flow.
No.
Yeah, see, I think that's a big problem because if he does have, you know, queen, jack of spades, he might just check back, take the free card and then fold the river, so.
Which makes the argument for the raise.
Absolutely, we do not let this guy.
Can I interject here?
He might bluff.
Matt's question is not relevant because you don't go from here, call and plan to check every turn. It depends what the turn card is. We're gonna have some dunk bets based on what the turn card is.
Mm-hmm. I think there won't be too many though, like it'll be mostly chucking, won't it?
Yeah, it probably will be mostly checking, but you can't go from here and plan to check every turn.
For sure, for sure, for sure, I gotcha.
You're gonna base it on what card comes up, and if you're playing live, you're gonna be watching the button. His response with the turn card too.
Okay.
You're gonna see, he you don't wa, when, whenever you're playing live, for anybody plays live, do not watch the board. As the board's being dealt, watch.
Oh, I watched, yeah, that's exactly what I do.
Yep.
Because it's that first split, second reaction that gives the honest reaction.
Yep. Yeah.
Alright, so what do you wanna do here Louis?
Uh, cool.
Call, I think I agree with the call because the SPR is gonna be a little less than one after the call.
So you can jam the river if necessary, if it goes check, check on the turn, in that case.
So I think that's right, I will say.
Yep.
Yeah.
I wonder if this is because his raising range imposition is composed heavily of spade draws, which he is going to be compelled or required to call.
Larry, why do you think his raising range imposition, you talking about pre-flop here?
What I'm talking about now, his imposition raising range is composed largely of front door flush draws, which he must call.
Well, what, what's the value? So you described the bluffs, give, give me the value.
Um, it's not about buffer value, it's about products, right? So if we raise here, he can't fold his spade draws. So we're getting maximum value from the spade draws.
Yeah, I, I personally don't, I don't have a click in mind.
It's not about value. I mean, do you think that he's doing this with any hands that are made and strong?
Pocket eights.
Yes, I do, but I think his, his, his bluffing range is composed, his semi bluffing range is composed of a lot of front door spade draws. Which is why we raise. Well, let's look, let's look at this stuff.
Well, I mean, so I think that whenever.
When I see this, I'm thinking a lot of the buttons range that he continued with, that would have a flush draw is a lot of aces. He has a couple of suited broadways. But they're also being taken up with the ace and king.
Right.
So I'm just extrapolating why we would, why would we raise out of position here with such a good hand and I think it's that's my theory, I could be wrong.
I mean, I like the.
Trying to have this conversation, because I mean, I don't necessarily, I, I think you're wrong, I'm just saying, whenever I see someone raise like this, I'd say that's probably polarized. And I think about, well, what hands does he do representing the value range? And what does he do representing the bluff range? Or the semi bluff range?
So if we were to look at what his raising range is?
I've twice asked if you had thought about what the value range is and I still haven't heard it. I mean, is there a value range that you think about?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course. It's just, this is a very rare play, right? If we were to look at an ag report of this spot, this play is, I think, probably less than 3%. Nah, it's probably a 10%. It's, 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 it's not a big part of his strategy.
His raising range?
Yeah, to this size, it's not a big part of his, his strategy.
So what does he do?
Think it's reasonable to do with any two spade combos too, like literally any little low suited connectors.
Those are draws, is there any value that he does it with?
Yeah, the value, pocket eights, king eight suited, ace eight.
Is there ace king in this range?
Yes, he, he has some ace king. He has some ace king, he didn't four bet.
Does he do this with ace, jack?
Probably shouldn't. But people will.
Ace jack with a. It is very unlikely, but I think possible ace, jack of, ace, jack with the jack of spades, ace queen with the queen of spades at low frequency. That's so few combos anyway.
I don't think he has ace queen in range. Ace queen off.
I don't think you can ever draw any strong conclusion. I mean, I think you're right, that wouldn't be smart, but my, my point is, you've kind of, so you've answered the question. I always think, you gotta think, what's the value, what's the bluffs? And, you know, is there an imbalance based on the board or the way he's playing or whatever? And in this case, it does feel, I mean, the bluffs are, um, a little bit muted by the fact that the ace of spades is on the board, but, um, uh, I so, but at the same time, um, there's probably a fair number of buffs here. If you're, if you're worried, if you think he's got the bluffs, the question is, and you think that he's never folding those because he's quote committed at 65 big blinds, why wouldn't you jam?
I think he's gonna have like ace five at hearts.
Yeah, we just got like king, queen, king, jack suited, king, ten suited, king, queen, jack suited.
I think there is a good argument for jamming.
Queen ten, I don't know.
And I think that argument is better on the two spade board rather than a rainbow board, like you changed that king to the, uh, king of clubs and I that call frequency goes way, 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 way up.
Yeah, I don't think we shove because I, does that give odds for his front door spade draw to call?
Is he not supposed to call like pretty much every front door spade draw?
So, hold on.
It's less than a pot sized shove, so he probably.
I would think he would.
Well, yeah.
Yep.
So I, I mean, I, I think there's a, there's a point in, um.
Bad card.
Mm-hmm. Terrible.
Except we checked, we didn't, we didn't raise, so we get to, we get to check here, so this is good.
Yep.
Um, I wanna clarify one thing. When we say what are his draws, we, people are answering two different questions. One is what do you think is the draws and what do you think is his range in the wild? We're not playing in the wild. We wanna, if you wanna, we were asking the question, what is this solver's range? So that's a different question. And I wanna just clarify what I heard Larry say. Not that when he raises here, he always has spades. What he's saying is somebody said, I don't wanna raise because I wanna keep his bluffs in. Larry said, I think a lot of his bluffs are spades and they're going to call the click raise, that's why I can do the click raise. And I think that that's true. We're not saying that his raises are a lot of spades. We're saying the draws that you didn't want him to fold. A lot of those draws are spades, some of them are, you know, the broadways are, you know, inside straight draws. Which I guess, I guess he's supposed to fold the, I guess he's supposed to fold his ISDs. But if he's got more spades than ISDs, let's.
Does he have inside straight draws on an ace, king eight board? I guess queen, yeah, I guess you could say the, uh, other two broadways.
They're all the queen ten, yeah, that's, that's all I mean. I mean, he does have five, six. He can, he, if he raises five, six, he's gonna, he should call five, six with a three bet. So he's got, he's got that inside straight draw also.
Alright, I guess time to check cool. I mean, I got top two and not folded.
Yep. Hit the check button. Oh, Joey's dead.
Oh, I'm sorry. What did Louis wanna do?
Louis wanted to check like a, like a boss.
Check like a boss.
I'm wondering if we do have any dunks with the four spades.
Louis doesn't.
Yeah, we do. Like I said, this, this would be one of the cards we have dunk bets on.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but I don't think we just.
What's the thinking behind the dunk bets?
Uh?
Why, what's the thinking behind the dunk bets? Like, why are we dunk banking?
Okay, the we were the passive player on the flop. We see bet, but then the button three, or raised us. And then we called. The passive player out of position when a draw hits gets dunk bet.
Ah, okay. Okay, learn something there.
And now, see, that helps our bluffing range. Because now if he doesn't have spades, his ace, jack is looking pretty crappy for, against our bluffing range. And if we're gonna have a bluffing range, we have to have a value range too.
And our value range includes spades, but it also includes top two. That's our low value. But not great because we don't, we don't love it because we're only doing it 13% of the time.
Well, and if you, if you three bet queen, ten or queen, jack, uh, with a queen of spades, you may, you may turn that into.
Yeah, this might be a fun time to do it.
What did the percent numbers mean?
How often? 87% of the time we're checking, 17, 13% of the time we're, we're betting, the solver mixes almost everything. You don't see a lot of hundreds ever, you'll see it sometimes.
Numbers in brackets?
Well, that's, that's 20% pot. So 14.1 blinds is 20%.
Oh, okay, okay, alright, thanks.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, this number here, the 87% is how often we're doing it. And then this number here represents the size of the bet in relation to the size of the pot.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Alright, so.
Uh, I mean, whatever, cool, raise, I guess, cool. I guess, yeah, I mean, raise call be bad, but, yeah, but. Yeah.
Guys, I'm dealing with power issues, sorry.
You're kinda stringing you along, so either you're gonna go for, you, you've got the whole, you're going, you're going all in or you're not.
Well, did he, uh, ace, jack, wow.
Ace, jack of hearts.
Yeah.
Did he call or fold?
He folded it, yeah. So I guess that makes sense. I mean, he's got a backdoor. He's got top pair. I don't, if you're finding that game, you're a better poker player now, that's a tough one to find.
And if he's not, if he's not his small bet on, on the turn, if we check that river, he's checking behind.
I guess he's raising for value just because to get cooled by war suited aces, right? Yeah, look how much suited aces we have, like ace jacks kind of like absolutely crushing all that.
Audio check, mic check.
You're there, you're back.
You're good.
So this is our range, so.
Storm here.
Can we look at button raising range?
Scotty, are you keeping an eye on chat?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry Larry, what did you ask?
Yeah, can we look at what button raising, yeah.
Okay.
So yeah, this is a pretty small part of his strat, it's definitely there. Can we look at is, is jack suited? Is he doing this primarily with, I guess he's just only doing this with hearts? No, he's doing this with everything.
He's he's playing secretly to me for a solver.
I thought ace, five of hearts might be in there, but that was.
I missed the hand more or less, trying to reconnect her.
You'll, you'll catch up.
So.
So really, the only, the only spade he has is queen, jack, queen, ten suited. Nine, eight suited, he's not even betting the spades.
Wow.
He's not raising the spades. Eight, seven suited, not raising the spades. That's why I said, I didn't think of flush, the spade flush draws were a large part of this range.
So just, but ace queen is suited of spades is raising, ace, jack, spades, right?
Ace queen can't.
Ace, the spades on the board.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you just, uh, can you filter for FDS, like go to filters? And then flush draw, flush draw nuts, or just flush draw I guess this time? Yeah, we're just really not doing it.
Yeah.
I guess, can you click combo draw too? Cause that's, that'll include the gut shots.
Yeah, it'll include these.
So, yeah, I guess we're just, I mean, so what's our percentage? So we're just, yeah, we're not, in theory, we're. So yeah, I guess we're just, I mean, so what's our percentage? So we're just, yeah, we're not, in theory, we're not doing it a lot. Fifteen percent, which is what his base imposition raising range is.
Do we have a, do we have an all draw? Can just, can we see every draw? Is that a thing? Yeah, put in the flush draws, combo, the gut shots? And those are the only draws.
You can select all of those.
Yeah, let's just do that.
Or you can just take the inverse of no draw.
Same thing.
Yeah.
I don't know how to do the inverse.
Yeah.
Man, subtract a hundred from fifty two.
I wasn't looking for the percentage. I wanted to look at the hands. I wanted to look at how he playing, how he's playing everything that we call a draw.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
But we noticed that the most prominent draw is backdoors. And one of the things that I've noticed a lot is on three bet boards, draw, flush draws become less prominent by a lot. And when the ace is part of, on the board, the ace of the flush, it's gonna be even more less.
Yeah, we're blocking a lot of the, the FDS, you're right.
To not worry about the flush draw when you're, when you're ahead like we were.
Questions. When you say that there, there are not a lot of flush draws, you mean there are not a lot of flush draws that are raised, or we don't have a lot of flush draws? Which did you mean?
I'm saying in a three bet pot, that dramatically reduces the amount of flush draws as a percentage of the total ranges, frankly, for both parties.
Well, not necessarily. If there's an ace on board, yes.
Especially when the ace is on board, yes.
If this was king queen.
Well, he's got all his ace side.
Yeah, no, that's true. I mean, but you gotta remember that if he, if he decided to, to flat with ace ten suited, a specific flush draw just represents twenty five percent of that experience. So you still don't have a lot of flush draws. It, it's, it's, they're there, they're just not a lot.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, this is a great, great point that Scotty's, Scotty's making a great point here. When the, if you'll remember, when the four of spades appeared on the turn, I think several people on the call went, oh groan, what a bad card. Because we're all thinking villain could have made a flush, which is true, but I think Scotty's point is the chances villain made a flush is pretty slim there. And that's a, a very important point.
Well, can we look at that range?
Wait one second, I have to clarify something. The reason that it's my point is so good is I'm the one who invited Josh to the call. So I get credit for that. Go on, Larry.
That was Josh, sorry for the mis eye.
No, it's okay, okay.
Yeah, I think Matthew has a very good point and we can actually look. Does it make sense to look after the turn comms? Click on SB node and then look at range versus range. Let's see who has more uh flush draws by looking at range versus. I'm sorry, more flushes.
I think it's gonna be the button, but by not by a lot. Oh, I'm wrong, it's even.
Yes. So it is the button.
Yeah, but.
By a negligible amount.
The bigger point is they're both like five percent.
Well, we, what I was talking about the turn, we, we can't get, we can't call here and plan to check every turn card. Because here we have forty six percent equity. After the turn card, we have fifty percent equity.
My only question about that number is, is that a factor of the fact that our range is filtered and we called? So we naturally have a more condensed range or because of the turn card?
Filtering has to come in. Filtering has to be a big part of that.
The turn card helps more of our filtered range.
Okay.
Be, before we move to the turn, can we go back to.
If you see here, all of the spades that hit, we have, we have at least some donking range.
True.
I do have a request from you guys, have a second.
Sure, go ahead.
Can we go back to the flop? And look at the response of small blind to the raise? And if you.
Yeah, I had this up and we never talked about it.
Ace king, I don't remember, do we have offsuit or suited? I can't remember.
We're offsuit.
Yeah, I mean, look at the percentage of re-races to that.
What, ace heart, king club?
Well, don't, don't, don't dig to the next level, please. I mean, yeah, we can do it later, but, but the basic observation is even the worst is doing it half the time, which is.
Yeah, you know, I do find this surprising how much we are re-raising. I think I'm a little bit too focused on how much we're blocking the value here.
So um, this is something I picked up in the last year about these flush draw boards. Like when you've got the strong value hand on a flush draw board, you're not necessarily re-raising to, for protection, like you're not trying to fold out the spades because the spades are probably gonna call you. You know, either GTO or in real life, they're just gonna look you up. What you're trying to do is, and this is true also, like exploitively, is other people are gonna shut down on the spade board. It's not, you're pulling them out on the flop, you're trying to prevent them from shutting down when you've got the value hand.
That's a good point.
That aggression, um, when you're, when you have these flush draws is, is a thing. And, and I'm seeing it here too. So you've got this great value hand ace king, right? That's a really good value hand there. And you don't want your opponent to shut down.
You could also see with the ace eight, right? It mimics that behavior.
It's kind of like one of those weird spots where that bet functions as.
That's the same, that's a better hand. That's, that's, that's two pair two, yeah.
I will say the only, the only exception is when we're uber nutted with the aces and kings. Can we go, can we look at breakdown here real quick?
Well, yeah, you're right. Yeah, I guess that's right. That's an interesting point. I probably would have chammed the aces too.
So if we're uber nutted with like.
Can I, can I go back to this real quick? The reason we are playing these hands passively when we do. I'm sorry, asthma. Is that we completely dominate the aces and kings on the boards with these four. Ace queen is playing aggressive. Because there are still some kings that can call a raise when we don't have the king. With aces and kings, we're dominating the board so much that when we raise, he has no, he doesn't have much range connectivity to call our raise often enough.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, this is a, this is an interesting breakdown because we just don't, we see that we don't have that many bluffs, it looks like. For solver, at least, we have a lot of good hands.
Yeah, so Joey made a point yesterday about Brokos and I will tell you, there's two very big Brokos teachings in this hand. The first one is this observation.
What are Brokels teaching?
About don't fear the flush draw so much. And the second one is this, you know, you're not raising to, you're not raising to get protection from spades, they're calling. You're raising so they don't shut down when they, when the spade comes in. And I, I may have gotten wrong, but that's my takeaway from what I've heard.
Yeah, that, we, we, we discovered that earlier with crazy sexes and I had forgotten that, how important that was. Good point. Okay.
I gotta go find my inhaler. I'll be back.
Okay. I'll steal, I'll steal the thing back from, I'll steal the thing back from Joey and then either I'll post something.
All right, I got it.
Oh, you're back, okay.
Getting notices that my internet connection is unstable, but it appears that I'm still connected, so.
All right, uh, we go to next hand maybe?
Yeah.
And I missed the very beginning. Are we studying anything specific or is there position?
Small blind versus button.
Sweet, perfect.
Uh, okay. In fifty big, fifty NL, a hundred big blinds, we got it. Thank you. You know, we always play. Are we always playing, are we always playing with small blind?
Yes, yes.
Sounds like a miserable day.
I think Louis, Louis Lance has gotten bumped off, it looks like.
Okay, who wants to be the next victim?
I'll take it.
Go ahead.
I mix pretty evenly here, sometimes raising, raising twelve, sometimes calling, uh, probably gonna be three betting, probably three betting slightly better. Yeah, I raised twelve. Maybe sixty percent raise. Oh shit, never mind. All right, cool.
No mixing here.
Apparently not. I've also been grinding saddies in tournaments for the past week, so I might be a little bit off on these cash ranges. Uh, oh, that's a good, that's really interesting. Um, I think you want to go pretty small here. Like I'm even considering the twenty percent. Uh, bet eight point two five, thirty three percent.
Anybody else have thoughts?
I think small bet is right, whether it's twenty or thirty three.
Yeah, I think it's gonna mix between some of those sizes, but small bet's gonna be preferred probably.
Yeah.
I'm betting small on the small thirty three.
I don't know if five is, I kind of want to do five here, but.
I, that's kind of what I was thinking, Joey. It's just like, it's, it's, it's attractive, that's. But I think this deep, probably a third is better.
Why?
But that.
Why?
Twenty percent. Just to be able to get some more money into the pot. When you're, when you're this deep, because it's gonna kind of play out the same way. The line is going to basically be the same, the nodes. And it's just, this is a little bit easier to uh get all of the money in on later streets when you're super noted.
Was not expecting this one.
No, no.
Kind of makes sense though. For us, I mean.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, definitely.
Typically, when there's locked up equity, we don't bet that large.
Right, and here's the, here's the exception. Why? This is my prediction. He has almost no ace king because he.
Yeah, this is a really good part.
Out of his range, what king nine does he have? His king nine suited has folded already. He's GTO, we know his range. I think he folded, he nine is suited. And he didn't fold his nine eight suited, that's it. So lock the back, what he, you know, have to be locked up equity that he has, I think.
Yeah, if we were to look at range versus range, we would have.
That makes a lot of sense.
All the, he would have zero straights except for the bottom of the straight.
Now, I think he might have. He might have a couple ace kings, because I don't think he'll three bet them a hundred percent.
We looked, we saw it. He doesn't have any ace king.
He has no flats with ace king.
Yeah. Yeah, I want to look, I want to look at it and see if he has any king nine suited even.
So I think he's gonna have, well, I don't know, I have king nine suited. I, I now that I think about it, he might not.
Oh, okay. I thought ace king was one of the ones.
No.
Well outside.
King nine has a tiny, tiny slipper.
I was looking at offsuit, I'm an idiot.
I was looking at queen nine, king nine suited, yeah.
Yeah, he's got so little king nine.
It's got some nine eight, right? The nine eight.
But he just, but that is such a small part of his range that we don't have to worry about the locked up equity on this board.
I mean, we're describing like a very small percentage, right?
Yep. Can we, can we look at the range, um, literary equity graph real quick? Yeah, yeah, we just, we just dominate, yeah.
Oh my God. We have the nut advantage and the range advantage.
But I, I don't, I haven't seen many lines like this with such a large gap all the way across the range.
Never cross.
I think it's because he has a lot of stuff that he, he can call down with, right? So, or call, call your flop with.
Yeah, he's loaded with two pair.
Yeah.
Well, but I think the key, I don't know, I suspect the key thing is he's loaded with two pair, but he can't go ham with two pair because you've got ace king, you've got the sets. So if you're sitting there with jack ten, you're not like shove, shove.
No, and that's why I kind of like that smaller bet. For our C bet sizing.
And he has no sets, he has no sets.
He has no sets and he, he only has a small percentage of straights.
Yeah, yeah.
So that is a huge nut advantage.
And the largest percentage of his straights are the donkey end.
You are supposed to go smaller with all of this at play, right? All of these factors at play that does.
No, we went bigger. No, no, bigger. We have the.
Okay.
Yeah. Because of our.
Also one of those GTO wizard things where, yeah, it wanted you to go bigger, but there was no EV difference between big and small bet.
Okay, okay.
Well, there's never, I mean, so anytime that you have a, a, a do something, it's gonna be the same EV from all the other do somethings. There are, I mean, with the exception of small, like math, like, you know, it doesn't get solved down to perfect. They're gonna be the same EV, that's why they write, because if anything is more EV, that's what you do.
Oh.
You only do the same thing in different, you know, you only, you only bet thirty, bet fifty and bet seventy is if bet thirty, bet seventy, they're always the same EV.
Oh, they're within, they're within, they're not always the same exact, but they're within a certain.
You're, okay, let me rephrase. They're always essentially the same EV.
Yeah, that's what he meant.
They're always within a certain percentage. Like this is ten point two seven to ten point two five.
But the nine point six eight never gets done?
No, not, not an ace ten.
There you go. All right. We've had seen one confirmatory case, base theorem tells us that Josh is right.
All right, next hand. Did anybody want to see anything else on that hand?
Ah, I think that's okay. Personally.
Hang on, we never really looked at this. I was planning to take a look real quick earlier, but we never did. This is essentially our range.
Have you guys ever used the, the practice mode where you actually try to develop the range?
I've done that in Flopzilla, like when I was doing my own exercises, going through the split suit, like math poker workbook and stuff. Flopzilla Pro, I was doing that a lot, range construction.
I, I, I don't want to derail this, but it's something to look at. If you, if you look at, I don't want to do it now, but if you look on the practice mode, there's this thing where you do range construction.
Oh, it's great. It's awesome.
I prefer using the range analyzer from pokercoaching.com.
Yeah. Okay.
Are we waiting on me here for a decision?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, three bet, raised to twelve, it's gonna mix between calling and three betting probably. I don't think it folds.
Folding and three betting and.
Okay, okay, okay.
Eighty five, eighty five percent.
Yeah.
Really, okay.
Three bets twelve or thirteen percent and folds eighty eight percent.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay.
Yep, but this time you did something more interesting. And you raised.
Well, that's what I'm doing in game at my tables, so.
All right, then definitely do it. If that's, if that's your exploit, do it.
Uh, out of position here, three bet pot, uh, jack ten, three, two spades. I'm sure you were supposed to continue here and like third, yeah, thirty three percent. I mean, that I've seen in cash games that checking in three bet pots is a thing more than it is in tournaments, but if this is me in game, I'm tossing out a third C bet.
I think, I mean, again, you know, I, three bet C bet is a pretty good rule.
Yeah, yeah, that's my logic.
But it is not the solver rule.
No, that's fair.
There is, is there a good amount of checking in this spot from solver?
Yes.
Okay, because I've started including more. I used to just default to betting, but.
My, my opinion is this might be a big bet board, so we're gonna have a decent amount of checks too.
Okay, I can see that, I can see that. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
I mean.
I get these wrong all the time.
Yeah. I know they're good spots. I chose a, I chose thirty three percent for a C bet though, so.
I think it's gonna, I think you're gonna see some fifties in here. Oops, a little bit.
I thought there would be some of this.
Look how much twenty percent C bet there is, that's crazy. Wasn't expecting that.
Is now a good time to consider an ag report here to understand where our big bets are coming from, what texture?
Yeah, when we. Yeah.
We could do that after the hand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't let us forget, because I was gonna do that earlier and I forgot.
I mean, so when, when I think about this is, you know, sizing goes down on three bet boards. And so when you're thinking big bet, sometimes that skews to like fifty percent.
Okay.
I thought there might be some of the seventy five percent in it on a jack ten board. Now, it could. It could be that other parts of our range wanted. It could be that other parts of our range wanted to do this.
Yep.
And this hand because it's second pair never wants to do this.
Yeah, that, that's what I thought too. This is a.
When we look at the range after this, we'll see.
Yeah, and you know what?
It's gonna be a big bet board, but our hand does not wanna do it.
Well, I would just say that a big bet, a big bet in a three bet pot is 50%. That's what I'm saying. And there's, there's times when it's bigger, but. That's the point. A big bet board, 50% is a big bet on a three bet board. It's not like a single red spot.
On the queen, jack, ten.
Yeah, but you get a lot of 75s and 125s too on certain boards.
On the queen, jack, ten, we had several overbets.
Okay.
Sure, absolutely.
And after what Scotty said in chat there, I think I really prefer a check call on the flop because now you're playing this super inflated pot, pot. With annoying suits at play here with.
Yet here you are. What are you gonna?
Um, out of position. I mean, check.
So let's remember that this is a three bet pot and, and these flushes are less of a concern.
Yeah, I'm, I, I.
But that's also weird that we got ace of spades, king of spades, and queen of spades unaccounted for.
Mm-hmm. I, I'm, I'm, I'm checking. I'm not triple bearing, triple barreling out of position without a spade here and, yeah.
There's nothing else to do here but check.
Exactly. That was my thought anyway.
Now what?
Ah, okay.
More so because I fear, um, king ten, ace ten, and. Um. Jacks, then.
33% pot. I think this is a viable spot for call and then 10% blocker on a lot of rivers. I believe so. I think calling is fine.
Anybody?
You could be right. I wouldn't be, so I get this wrong all the time, but I wouldn't be shocked if this was just a fold.
Yeah, maybe. When I make it to the river and I'm like, why did I hunt away how many dozens of big blinds?
In population, I think I fold this in population.
Okay, okay. I mean, I can see it.
Yeah, this is, when I'm starting, when I've got like a 10, I'm looking at my kicker and I'm saying, you know, I don't have the king and the ace that is in range. That's what's.
For me, I'm just.
Second pair, not top kicker. That's what's making me think that even, and I, I think you guys all can laugh at me when they push the button. I, I think that there's a chance that this could be mostly folds, if not all folds.
Oh, I wouldn't be surprised. Just, I'm thinking about this from like. Sorry, go ahead, Joey.
Advocate advocate for a second. If we do have multiple sizings on the flop and. More value is gonna have larger bets. This may be one of our strongest hands in the smaller bet categories.
Okay, okay. I could see that.
Mean MDF wise, we can't fold yet.
Okay. Um, yeah, just, okay, so three bet pot, C bet call, and then when you check turn out of position, I mean, I would think button's gonna fire. Close to 100% of the time, so I think calling's fine.
Yeah, so.
Thinking ahead to the river where I can toss.
Yeah, I'm gonna say calling is fine. I didn't realize how small this bet was. 13.7 you gotta call.
Yeah, that's why.
Well, no, it is, it's already starting to mix folds.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like I said, in game, in real life, I fold this.
I can totally see the argument for the fold, for sure.
Yeah.
Totally.
Against a solver, we still have to hang on a bit.
Yep, okay.
But you see, this is purely an MDF call because it's negative.
Yep. And on most rivers, I'm gonna be electing for the 10% blocker here. Uh, that's, I was gonna say on a spade. Turn floats. Um, probably either need to check or basically bluff. I know four, four to the flush on the board, you wanna be the first in the pot here. If you're doing that, you're effectively turning your hand into a bluff. I think just check. I think it'll go check, check often enough and you have decent showdown. He's gonna have a lot of jack x. I don't know, it's kind of.
What do you do, what do you do if he comes back with a 40 or 50% bet?
Fold. Instant fold. So, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll. You know what? No, I like the blocker here cuz I actually will throw out a lot of blockers on a. Four to a flush and it gets a lot of calls from non-flush hands and the weaker flushes and you still keep it cheap with your showdown. I think queen 10 here, second pair is kinda right on the line of having enough equity to do that.
So what's that?
10%.
10%, alright.
Yeah, bet seven.
Anybody else have any other thoughts?
I'm check folding.
I'm check folding.
Check folding. I don't think you're ever gonna get called by worse hand here, even to a 10% bet.
I'm turning this into a bluff. I don't think it's strong enough to check.
How big a bluff?
Should have folded the turn.
I'm looking more. I think 10% is too small.
Yeah, 10% wouldn't be a bluff.
Yeah, I'm thinking 35%.
And that probably takes down the pot and wins the hand and 10% just gets called by any made value handed and loses. Yeah, that makes.
What are you, what are you folding out at 30%?
Anything that's not a flush.
Yeah, jack x without a flush.
Okay, that's probably right.
Um.
So 10% your final answer?
Uh, yeah, I like it a lot less now after discussing it. Um, now check, check fold, check fold is, uh, probably best. I'm gonna go check fold.
Yeah, I'm sure there's gonna be checking too with this.
Yep.
Almost 1% bluffs here with this sizing.
Alright.
At least I kind of got the sizing right.
Yeah, you're in there, Joey. You're in there. It counts.
By the way, the seven, the seven had the same, um. Equity. As if you just go back and look, your, your bet of seven was this, although it never chose that bluff size. It did have the same, um, equity of. Yeah.
I think villain's range was very heavily weighted towards a jack x combo. They're like exactly what he was holding. And it's like you either need to commit to the bluff or not, and it's just not a spot where I would have been comfortable doing that.
Yeah, thi- this is a board where we have some really big bets. We even have a three X pot. But it's just, our hand, the tens, they don't wanna go large.
We wanna look at the, um, ag report here?
Yeah.
But before you go to ag report, just real quickly, I wanted to, just on the queen 10. Um, I just been pointing out the, the bluff size that we didn't believe in, which was seven big blinds? No, it was a five? It was five.
No, it was seven, I think.
Seven, then why is it giving us fives here?
Oh, oh.
It's on the flop. No, I wanna go the river, river.
But I mean, when I, for, when I mentioned the 10% size, that's not as a bluff. That is entirely a blocker bet to get the showdown with your marginal holding.
Right, I just wanna show, I just, I just wanna see if, if the thing I saw before it flew away was too much.
What, what is the best way to do this? To look at reports now or go to the river with this hand and then come back and do reports?
I think river and then reports.
Yeah, because once you go to the reports, we're away.
Okay. Yeah, so like I said, I thought this was a big bet board, just not with our category of hand.
Right.
What percentage of this is betting 19% yet? Okay.
Yeah, a lot of 75. This is.
A lot of 75, and actually, I'm surprised to see this three X.
Jam on the flop.
Yeah, you don't see jams at large that often in relation to.
We go to ag report, I think that's gonna be like less than 1% of our strategy across all flops.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, this flop is a unique flop. And I don't know which ones.
I think it's gonna be specific to this jack high, ten high flop.
Alright. And then.
It's kind of, oh, is it ten jack? Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, we're pure checking.
Right, and, and when we bluff.
Or do we have, do we have off or suited?
We have, we're offsuit.
And I will note, so many of these difficult spots on later streets could be avoided by checking, checking flop out of position. Like I, I used to think that was not an option in a three bet pot, checking rather than C betting, but.
When we saw it.
It'll serve you so well in a spot like this.
40% check.
Right, so hard diamond is the only, is the combo that does it. That's a, that's adorable. And when we do it. Judge is looking at the.
Well, no, diamond heart does it. Heart diamond checks.
Oh, you're right, okay. But look at a, okay, let's look at, uh. The EV.
I don't know why, but having the queen of hearts wants to check more than the queen of diamonds.
Yeah, the check is 5.7, what, I can't see the numbers are too small, but what is the difference between the seven, between betting seven and betting? So 33 was the, was the bluff size you wanted to do, right, Joey?
Oh, we're not at the river yet.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Good enough. I'm waiting for the river.
And I think the, uh, the key there to the heart combo, the 10 of hearts blocks him from having to top two here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's very relevant.
So we checked, he bets.
Yeah, small. We call with a queen 10. Big bluff with spade.
Oh, the, the spades are bluffing.
Hmm.
And in fact, if you.
Yeah, that does make sense though. I like it.
Combo is only one, only one of the two combos that wants to fold it all in here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then we get the river. Yeah, our bet size is mostly gonna be actually 10%.
What made hands are block betting here? What, like top pair, jack x? Yeah, ace, jack, yeah.
No, that's a flush. That's the nuts.
Oh, I'm an idiot, okay. Uh, it's. Yeah, and pocket eights is like the. Is that the 10%? Yeah.
Pocket eights.
This is an eight high flush.
Okay, that's all spades. Wow, okay. So it's not putting a single chip into the pot without a made flush. Except for king, queen, or does the king, queen have the spades as well?
And off.
And, okay, okay, okay.
But we did have a, we had, we had the sliver in queen 10 of the bluff, and this was what I just wanted to look at. So the bluff was worth 7.5, the check was 7.5, and the small bluff was 7.24, not that wor-. So your, your initial decision was not that much worse in, in EV, even though we didn't like it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But wasn't, it wasn't terrible.
I think that is a spot that just illustrates so well, like the exponential growth of pots, like just a simple C bet out of position on flop. Like look how huge the pot is on turn. Look at the spots that you have to decide on the turn in the river. Like rather than, rather than just check calling flop, like you can have a lot more control over the hand, lot more pot control. A lot more manageable to play, so.
Well, this, yeah, this is an important hand to look at too because.
Oh, these come up all the time.
Increasing your, your three betting range is great, but playing post flop, that's a different story.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just need to remember checking in a three bet pot is an option when you're out of position, like, yeah. And I have been observing it more. It used to not be an option, so I am improving.
I just wanna comment, um. About something I said earlier, even in the three bet pots, if there's no ace on the board, there's still decent amount of flushes in both ranges. It's having the ace on the board of the flush draw.
Right.
Blocks the flushes.
Yeah.
Yep. Oh, that's a astute point.
Yep, and the thing, King, I think this is the case, that, uh, any, that every situation where you are out of position. Has some checks. You know, you, you, if you raise and you're called in position, you've got some, you've got, you know, hands that bet also check. And that's true of three bet pots, um, and I'm gonna bet that it's true of four bet pots when next time.
I would think so. I used to see that when I was running my own sims in GTO Plus, like there was a lot of spots that was like 99.9% checking out of position flops.
But even here, where, where, where you, where you do a lot of betting, you know, like in a four bet pot, you do a lot of betting. I wouldn't be surprised if there's some out of position checks.
Alright, so now we're looking at the ag report for, um.
So this is.
Our small blind play.
Three bet, button calls, flop, and then we're on the flop. These are all the flops that you can have.
Can you sort by some kind of? Can you sort by checking?
Oh, cool.
Built just for checking.
That's a good way to visualize it.
Checking 32%. And if we do it this way.
So. So the ace, the ace.
Straight board stack.
Looks like we're checking on a lot of monotone boards.
Yep.
A lot.
And the frequency seems to go up pretty linearly as you. Uh, as the high card goes down, which is of course logical.
Yeah, so look, I'm, we're checking half the time on a monotonous board.
Okay.
And then the place where we stop checking is.
The high cards, monotones.
Yeah, and a super wet middling. You know.
Well, everyone where we, once we get to like this point, 25%. A lot of them look like ace high, king high, um, five for two, that's weird. Ten high, queen, 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 king, queen, queen, jack, queen. Looks like almost all of these are over, and nine are higher. But there's a couple mixed in, like six for two, seven for two.
Cuz he doesn't have.
Yeah, that's what they all have in common. They have those connected low, middle.
They either have to have a high card. Or a two.
Nine, six, nine, six, three. But what it is is.
No, not nine high or better.
Oh, right.
Or a two. I think if we keep going up, we might find it.
Yeah, that's all nine high plus. All of it. Right.
Yeah, I mean, just from the initial report, the other big category that we check are just three low cards, you know, nine, nine high boards.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that makes sense. Our, our general classes with high proportion checks are monotones and low boards.
Yeah.
So that was monotone.
Now take out the monotones now, so we have no monotones in the, in this, in the range at all.
Um.
Yeah, if you just sort by like nine high, highest card nine, I think we have a very high check proportion.
Here we go.
This is rainbow boards, right?
Rainbow and, rainbow and flush draw.
Okay.
Again.
Hey, uh, if somebody goes to the reports, sorry, Joey, if somebody goes to the reports and goes to the dropdown, you can just do by rank and it'll give you the distribution that way.
I bet if you do rank nine high, our check is, you know, 60%.
Not that one.
I go to the filter.
Filter, filter.
No, no, keep going left, keep going left.
Thing. And then highest card nine, nine, eight, seven.
Okay.
Hey, I pinned it. I said 60. Haha.
Yeah, so if you, if you get rid of that filter for the nine for a second. And then go, keep going to that bar that you were on where the filters are, keep going left, all the way to the left, no.
Where's the left?
If you get rid of the 10 filter. And go, go to where, go, go to the top left where it says strategy plus EV ranges breakdown reports, all the way to the left. Of the entire screen. Now your search says reports. Go to the right, drop down. Pick rank or high cards.
Oh, you could do that here.
No, no.
It's a different, it's gonna give you a different thing.
Go to high cards. There you go.
Right, so on king high board, so we're betting all the time on king high boards.
I see point.
That's just.
Yeah. And a deuce high board is deuce, deuce, deuce. I think.
Yeah, I mean, deuce high board is.
That is correct, yeah.
Combo. Yeah. So it's interesting that the big bets do show. The big bets show up with the jacks. And the fives. I don't know why the fives put the jacks.
The very big.
And the, and these like low Broadway boards, jacks and tens. Low Broadway boards.
Yeah, I mean, and this is pretty predictable. As the pre-flop aggressor, low card boards are bad for us. You know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I wanna comment on that. So actually middling boards are bad for us. Yeah, so I want to comment on that. So actually, middling boards are bad for us. Low boards are good for us because they're bad for both of us. And if you think about it, like, the five highs, they're bad for both of us, and we have all the Aces, Kings, Queens, and Jacks. And so, um, it's not the, you don't fear the five-high board, or even the six-high board, you fear the nine-high board and the eight-high board.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, also, there, there's extremely few, you know, four and five-high boards, and, and a very high proportion of air boards within that subset.
Yep, and, and because they're both, that's true, it's a much less extent, but when it occurs, people always say, oh, that's bad for us because it's low, it's not bad for us. Because we, it's bad for, when it's bad for both of us, it's good for us.
Yeah, for sure, and the extreme example of that, again, which never happens, is the deuce, deuce, deuce board. That's a great board for us.
Yeah, I agree with that. Same thing, yeah, I do agree.
So paired boards. Ace and King-high were almost range betting.
Paired big boards.
Huh?
I said paired big boards. We don't know, we, we don't know all paired boards, but paired big boards, we love.
Yeah, well, King-high, nine-nine, King-high, eight-eight. It's not just a high pair like King-King.
Yeah, yeah.
They, they are in there.
Right. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna see where, when we get down to a, a, a cha- a ten or a nine, if it's paired.
Once we start reaching Queen-high, we're not range betting nearly as much. There's a couple here.
Yeah.
Jack, Jack, ten.
Jack four-four.
As the high card gets lower, our frequency goes down, but our sizing goes up on a paired board.
Right.
Yeah, as it gets lower and lower. That makes sense.
But the boards were nowhere on our. The pair, the paired, the paired middle cards, the paired tens, we don't love, and I, uh, you know, the, the, when the ten was the top card, ten-ten-eight, ten-ten-nine. We didn't love those, and I'm gonna bet the same as true of nine-nine.
Well, just button range is always gonna have such a high concentration of ten-X and nine-X in that spot, I think.
Yeah, that's why I like on this board, Jack-ten-three. Two-tone. Oh, didn't mean to press that one. Like, all these Jack-ten boards, we have large betting on.
Mm hmm. And practically.
Even the monotone boards.
Hmm.
Uh, you know, and I, I can't figure out why that is. I mean, I see it, but I'm not so sure I understand why.
Go here, let's look at the range. We have a slightly, we have a range and a nut advantage slightly all across the line. This bottom part of the range you can ignore. This is just how well our junk compares to his junk. The betting range, the value betting range starts somewhere around here.
Yep.
Usually about sixty-five percent.
I, I guess it's, I mean, it might, might be because, um, we, uh, he's gonna have a fair amount of Kings and Aces, and so. Our, I don't, our Jacks, we have a lot more Jacks and tens. Um. We have a lot more Queens. Does Queen, the Queen, two Broadway, Queen-high boards, um, that big?
What, what kind of boards? Like Queen-Jack?
Jack.
I guess it does, so like, it's really, it really is the Queen-Jack and ten-two Broadway boards that have this.
Well, these are connected, like Queen-Jack-six.
Still has a lot.
Yeah, I mean, again, so when you, when the third card is not close, doesn't complete the straight. So you haven't, you have, you know, using G T O, it's, the O E S D is possible, you have two Broadways, and it's not a King, and it's not an Ace, that's when the big bets come up.
Mm hmm.
But I, I want to point something out, and I've seen quite a bit of this. Uh, the old thinking was, with a flush draw and an O E S D, you want to rate, you want to bet larger. And look, Queen-Jack-seven suited, two-tone. Compared to the. Rainbow. We don't really bet larger because there's a flush draw.
Yeah, you're right. I see it.
In fact, on these ones with flush draws, we're betting smaller than the ones at a rainbow.
No, I think that's a good point.
And the check frequency is almost the same.
That's a three-bet pot thing? I think you gotta be careful here, right? We're in a three-bet pot. And I, I have found, and I'm gonna say something that I don't fully understand, that these things tend to flip around when you go to three-bet pots. Like, if you were looking at the same situation, you may find it different in a single-rise spot.
Uh, well, I mean, I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that we're the aggressor out of position, right?
Uh, yeah, I'm trying, I'm just saying that for the, for the aggressor is, maybe that's right, you know? I don't know what causes it, but it flips around, and that could be a good explanation there, I don't know, I haven't figured that out yet.
Right, but notice one thing, um, look at the difference between the Queen-Jack-seven rainbow and the, and the very next Queen-Jack-seven. The, uh, go, go up, up to that rainbow in that one. So you're right, the, the rainbow has, has more big bets than the flush draw. But those are the big bets. Look at the middle-sized bet. The flush draw has almost none of the small bet. It's all, so the small is probably twenty, so it, it, it doesn't like.
Yeah.
But it does like thirty-three. That's just interesting to me.
Yeah.
For flush draw board.
And the check frequency still remains more or less the same.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
All right, who, who's turn is it? Or do?
I've done two, I can keep going.
Do, you do one more, do more, one king.
Do one more. Do you want to look at Mark Hand soon?
Yeah, well, let's do that, and this.
Sure. Uh, this is three-bet for me, raised to twelve. No, we're going twelve, bro.
Yeah, do you want to raise to twelve, twelve or twelve there?
Yeah.
This is a spot.
Yeah, s- super annoying, um, you know what? Okay. I mean. In tournaments, I know folding here is correct a lot of the time. This sizing to me is very suspicious. Um.
Why is folding correct in tournaments?
Uh, because this is gonna be King-King, Ace-King. Like, King-King plus Ace-King. The vast, 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 vast majority of the time, um. Like, I'm looking at the sizing, and this is, like, top of range for me here, like, villain has top of range in my mind from this type of sizing. I wouldn't be surprised if jamming is a thing in cash games here. Just calling seems so bad, like. I'm, I'm kind of, uh, very uncomfortable. In this sort of a spot, to be honest, because I feel like an idiot, like a nit, if I fold, calling seems terrible, and all-in seems like a punt versus his top of range.
In the games that I play, this is a fold.
Yeah, I mean, in the tournaments I'm playing, I'm folding this, but this is usually with, like, a forty effective stack. I should be a little bit more prepared and studied in this spot, but, uh.
Well, what, your instinct is what? Your instinct is to fold?
Yeah.
Do it.
Honestly, it's.
Follow your instinct, man.
Do it.
Yeah, yeah, all right, fold, sure.
Yeah, I think we're gonna call just because of the configuration.
I want to click this so barely, but you said fold?
Yeah, but it's a cash game, dude, so I, I mean, I can see the all-in totally being a thing, yeah, of course, there it is, yeah, for sure.
Wait a minute, I'm, I'm confused here. What was the pre-flop here? It was, uh, raise, raise, raise?
Yeah, just raise, right?
No, so for all my hemming and hawing, like.
This sizing is not suspicious because he's in position.
Yeah, but that's relatively, well, okay, no, you're.
Four-bet sizing's in position or just a tad over a min-bet?
I'm, I'm, I'm understanding that here, yeah, 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 um, but. Just, I hate Ace-Queen off in those types of spots because, like, you're hoping for him to have tens, you're hoping for him to have jacks, and I think those are supposed to be folds in cash games, right?
Uh, you guys, give me thirty seconds, or I want to look at something, because I'm confused. Button raised twelve, two-point-five, small blind re-raised.
To twelve.
Twelve, button re-raised to twenty-six, it's up to the small blind. Um, my G T O wizard has a fold here. Why is this different? What am I looking at wrong?
I mean, calling.
Oh, I'm looking at, I'm looking at G G instead of fifty N L.
Oh, yeah, no, G G's got a much more. Harsher break structure.
I mean, like, calling doesn't seem great here. In my mind, it's probably supposed to be fold or a three-bet, and I mean, I, I think my analysis was actually relatively accurate.
Dang, we needed a three.
Yeah.
Or Ace or a Queen.
We had some outs, we had some outs on this.
What am I?
It's one of those annoying spots where, like, I know my nitty tendencies used to be correct in tournaments, and like, trying to transition, get away from that to playing these the way they're supposed to be played in the cash game, that's, that can kind of be a spot that I struggle with.
Okay, so what's weird about this, uh, is I generally study at two-hundred big blinds because I play cash live, I should say. And Ace-Queen folds in a deep-stack game and jams in a hundred big blind game.
I can see that.
Which is like, whoa, I didn't know that.
What does Ace-Queen suited do in two-hundred?
I'm talking about offsuit, Ace-Queen suited.
I know.
Uh, look, give me a second, I gotta go back to two-hundred, because I was, I now just.
In regards to sizing, this twenty-six is quite common for four-bet.
Yeah, I, I understand your, your explanation of that now. It makes, makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, Ace-Queen.
It's like a min-click, a greedy min-click with top of range. I, I see where you're coming from completely.
Ace-Queen suited flats in a, in a two-hundred big blind game.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, I mean, I will have calls, calls there. I'm trying to, trying to do more three-betting in those spots. But after I three-bet and I get four-bet, and I know the type of ranges I'm up against, my instinct is to fold, so that makes me think that flattening pre.
Can we change it to two-hundred?
No, I, I would disagree because in population, they are not going to four-bet you like this.
Okay.
Is population getting you with an Ace-five suited, Ace-seven suited, Queen-nine suited, Queen-ten suited?
No, but they're getting you with King-King, Ace-Ace, and.
Right, but that means that's not happening.
Right, and if that's, if they're only doing it with this part of the range, it's not bad to fold against it.
Oh, okay, all right, cool.
Right, and.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Right, but here's the important thing. If they're only doing it with that part of range, they're doing it very, very rarely. So your Ace, so your raise is still profitable.
And, and also, you know why? Because they're gonna call King-Jack, they're gonna call Queen-Jack, they're gonna call King-nine suited, they're gonna call Ace-four suited, Ace-three suited, Ace-two suited, Ace-six suited. All these hands, they're still gonna be in there with a call, because they don't want to fold.
Yeah, I suppose.
And that, that makes your three-bet even more profitable.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then when they call these hands. Instead of three-bet, instead of four-betting as wide as they should, they have a lot of these calls that should be folds. They're gonna go to the flop with too large of a range, and that's where the exploitative three-bet, c-bet, small comes in.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm with you, okay.
Because they're.
All right, so my logic wasn't too far off then.
So they're gonna have a harder time defending these extra hands in the range, because their range is gonna be too wide, they can't defend even against a small bet, small bet.
Yep, okay.
Especially if they start having some of these in here, and you know they will. I've been called, I've had three bets called with all these Broadway. I've had three bets called with these small Aces.
Mm hmm.
For creationals, wanna see a flop?
Oh, dude, I've been grinding satellites all week. I had an Ace-Ace fold with a sub-ten big blind stack yesterday, which was correct, so it's like such a different thing.
Oh, yeah.
I got my ticket after folding my Ace-Ace, by the way.
Yep.
Four.
Satellite Ace-Ace.
Congratulations. What was the satellite to?
Oh, that's to a, uh, two-k live event in Toronto at the end of March, so I'm playing a mega-sat, a hundred-dollar mega-sat on Sunday, and if I qualify in that, which I do like eight out of ten times, I'm registered to a two-k W S O P circuit ring event in Toronto.
Good luck.
Congratulations.
As you said that, I heard the Canadian accent for the first time.
Okay, I tried to keep it under wraps.
All right, good luck, I boot the cards.
Who wants to take over for their hand histories?
I got a, I got a, uh, hold on. I got a hand here from Matthew that's right on schedule.
Oh, so do you want, oh, is this, this is the situational one? Oh, I fucked this one up so bad. Uh, you know, one, yeah, okay. So I've got a few, I, it's been a weird couple of weeks at the poker table, so I just sent this one because it matches with our theme for today, and you can all laugh at me. So the button in this situation is a loose raiser. I've seen him raise with nine-six of spades. And, uh, in middle position, and he is drinking, I don't think he's drunk, but he has quite a large stack. He's actually has a couple of K, and I put it at seven-fifty, because that's my effective stack.
Hey, Matthew, can I ask you a quick question before I go on? Is this a ca- is this a live game or an online game?
This is a live game at the Glorious Commerce Casino.
Playing five-five.
Oh, this is California Live.
What is it, a seventy, seventy-dollar flop?
Uh, I think it's six before the flop, and then they take one on the turn.
Six before the flop?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, take, sorry, 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 sorry. One before the flop, six on the flop, one on the turn.
Right.
Yeah, that sounds right.
That's my.
Plus a dollar tip.
Okay, so this is, I think, pretty, this is three-bet, pretty obvious, right?
We bet here, and I'd like to see you three-bet to eighty.
Yeah, I don't hit a fold.
I like that.
Oh, and that's, that's five small blind, five big, that's more of a live thing, right?
I, I don't hit a fold.
It's California thing, yeah.
Yeah, I like it.
No, it's everywhere, every, I would say about half of my room is opening to twenty, in a two-five game.
No, I just meant the blinds.
The blind or five-five, not two-five.
Okay.
Yeah, correct. In California, it's just a limit thing. They spread two-five with a max buy-in of three-hundred dollars, and then they all, the same casinos will also spread five-five with a higher buy-in.
Understood, understood.
All right, fuck up one. What do we do here?
Well, can we go back for, I mean, so are we gonna check all this later? Because I'm lodging, I think Ace-Jack offsuit's, uh, uh, is a mix to fold.
I like.
I, I'm a hundred percent on board with a three-bet here. Did he limp or did he raise?
I believe this is a hundred percent three-bet.
Yeah, did he limp or did he raise?
He raised, yeah.
I three-bet this a hundred and ten percent.
Yeah.
Because I always want a three-bet more than Scotty does.
Yep.
Mm hmm.
I think.
Against the loose drinking player, I think the three-bet's better.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a three-bet G T O against this player, it's a hundred twenty percent three-bet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess it's a drinking player that, you're right, I withdraw my comment.
Yeah, it's also, Ace-ten is a three-bet here.
Small blind versus button, I three-bet this against anybody.
Yeah.
Unless he has a stat line of like five-five.
No, you're right, I'm wrong, you're right.
Yep, sure, sure. Yeah, Ace-ten might mix. Ace-Jack is just a hundred percent.
Ace stands the three-bet, too. I'm, I'm the hundred big blind chart. I, I didn't see, we're not that deep here.
We're a hundred and fifty.
We're a hundred and fifty blinds deep.
Dude, forty is deep to me. This is crazy.
Okay, this is, I'm very happy, I'm very happy with your three-bet. And. Two hearts, we don't have a heart. I would like your first mistake to be a small, uh, betting this flop small. That would be like, I would like to see that first.
Yeah, I think we're looking at, this might be a range bet.
Yeah.
Yep, I'm betting range.
All right, that's, I'd see, if you're doing this in order to check raise, that will be interesting.
I'm.
Oh, God.
I don't think you can check raise here.
Well, you can.
You can't check raise now.
He shoved on you. Not now, but.
He shoved like seven times the pot.
Yeah.
Yeah, or now, four times, three, three and a half, four times the pot.
Yeah.
I hope you fold, but I'm guessing you don't. I mean, I'm folding.
I don't know, I think, I think you got a call.
I mean, so is unblocking hearts important here?
Uh, yeah, yeah, but he can just. Uh, yeah, yeah, but he can just so easily show up with any random queen X.
And any random ace.
The.
I would.
Any just random weird bluff.
How often do people play trips here like this?
I, I think a lot. Like more than they should. Like they get excited. And just pile it all in.
So we, we went to the flop with a four to one S, SPR or four.
Five-five though, this might be a more competent player pool.
After we check, I wouldn't be surprised to see him do this with pocket nines either.
So did we go to the flop with the four SPR? What was the, what was?
Yeah, basically, basically, give or take.
Wow. Wow.
Yeah, I, I don't. Arrange the guy and if you just, I mean, you just get, you know, if you think he's wide, maybe you'd call if he's doing this or something other.
Have you seen him play any hands previously?
Yeah, he's played wacky hands. He has made, uh, some, I, I noted he, he made a big. Bluff with a misdraw on the river when, you know, when his flush draw missed and he bet the river. I. You know, and all of these things talked me into a call. Uh, and that was just. Don't.
So I think this.
This is a fold.
I think it was a couple of things. One is generally speaking, this is a fold. And when I say generally speaking, even against a splashy guy who's loose and drinking. You, you probably want to see him do this. You, you probably would have good. Experience that he does this lighter than a queen or ace king.
Okay.
And, hold on Joey, let me finish. And. And, and you just gotta remember, like, letting it go instead of losing six hundred dollars is frequently the right thing to do. Having said all of that. If you've actually seen him do it. And you're comfortable that, you know, he, there, the range is wider than ace king plus like, you know, then, then you do it. And if he winds up with the queens, that's just a cooler. Um, but you gotta see it. You can't, you can't just say he's drinking. Sorry about that. I don't.
No, that, those are the poker gods calling to slap me for having made this call. Uh, I think that the general principle here is. All of that stuff that I said, yeah, he's loose. Yeah, he's splashy. Yeah, he's bluffed on the river. But. It, it, you know, it, when he's just more likely to have it than not, and this is a fold.
Well, so let me ask you a question. Can I ask you a question? Have you seen him? In this session, jam light, and then exposes cards as a light jam?
Uh, not in this situation. Like I said, I, I think the bluff I've seen him make is misdraw on the river and he, you know, he shoved the river.
For six hundred and sixty dollars.
Not with this, no, because.
I mean, a four hundred percent.
I have not seen him, I have not seen him make a bluff of this magnitude.
So that's the point. I, I mean, so I kind of agree with your assessment that you've made a mistake because. The, the way I would approach this is, is if I had seen him do it once or twice. And I looked him up and still lost, I wouldn't, I wouldn't kick myself. I'd be bummed, but I wouldn't kick myself.
Yeah, I, I agree with that logic a hundred percent because. Yeah, you, you might be thinking, yeah, he's loose drinking. You might have seen another, you know, because even in my, my mind, that was like, okay, maybe this might be a call. But. If you haven't seen him do this, this, if you can correlate one spot with another, if you haven't seen. That evidence before, right? So, yeah, I agree.
And for what it's worth, I also think it's a, it's a range bet on the flop. And that makes it even easier to make this fold, you know, if I bet whatever I bet on the flop and he, and he shoves all in, I mean, then it's an even easier fold.
But if I could just make one more comment on this, like, you know, ranging someone who's like. Out of line. I see, this happens to me a lot. I'll sit down and there's a, I call them a backpack. So a backpack shows up. Young, he's kind of like got an edge to him, not very pleasant. And I'm like, this guy's gonna be a buffer, right? Until I see it twice, like verified buffer, I don't assume he's what he looks like.
Yeah.
And that's served me well because, you know, and I have to remind myself, you haven't seen it, you haven't seen it, you haven't seen it. And in this case, it's the same example, which is until you see it, but once you see it. Then you should just be comfortable with your read.
Yeah. So all that being said, I'm not finding the call there.
No, neither am I. Yeah, it was a bad, it was just a, it was just a bad call. Uh, so I've got a couple of other hands of people want that are not this configuration. I shared this configuration just because it was for today.
I see where you're coming from though, dude. Like, I really do. I get it.
What'd you say, Joey?
Can I share real quick?
Yep, yep, I'll stop the share.
I've got a couple as well. I just have like the raws from, uh, PT four. I wasn't able to pull up that replayer, but.
What can you raw?
So this is.
Well, if you have, if you have Poker Tracker four, you could share your screen and just do it in the replayer.
Okay.
I'm afraid to do it, but.
So this is Matt's hand.
Yep.
Um. What is your calling range? What would you call? You, you see what the solver's doing?
I'm. I would, I think the calling range starts. Solver was calling. Uh, my solver was calling ace jack. That surprises me. I, I, I think ace king. Is more reasonable. But I don't, I think that's a fold too. I think you need a queen to call.
Yeah, I'm with you. I'm with you. A hundred percent.
Hey, Joey, can you go back to the button? I, I, what's the frequency of the all-in eighty-eight in this situation?
Zero. Zero.
I just think you're about to result getting away.
He has one tiny sliver of it somewhere.
It's weird because like it shows up when you look at that.
Because it's.
Click on, click on the sliver, go back and, and click on it and then make, make it full height and it'll show us the hands it's doing it with.
Oh, it is full height.
Oh, my God.
I know it is.
Okay, there's no way.
Where does that zero point one come from then? It's on ace four suited, queen ten suited. But it doesn't show up at all.
What I can tell you at the time, I was thinking, this is, you know, I think this is common. I was thinking. There is no way he would make this play with a queen. It's the wrong play. He should want to keep me in with the queen. So he can't have a queen.
That was my initial thought as well.
That's just the wrong way to think.
Where I was going with this. Is you take the nuts. Ten percent of the nuts is your bottom. So.
Not following that?
Okay.
So that's like queen jack plus then.
So you have population here. Where ace ten is a call, or I mean, GTO. But then you want to adjust this for population. And. Because you know, you can't call ace ten versus population. What? Matt Affleck teaches, and this is where I picked it up, is from him. In spots against population and you're looking at these solutions, take the nuts. And then you want at least ten percent of what the nuts is making in your call range. So you want something that's better than ten point eight. EV. Chips to, for the call.
Yeah, and that's all queens.
And. Looks like the.
Oh, it's ace, okay, ace king.
Bottom hand using that metric would be ace king all.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good little thumb. And I think that. That makes sense. And did it have to be that the, the uber nuts, like quads, or can it just be, um?
Well, I think that's a good metric. That's a really good rubric to work from.
No, I've always done with the, with that, the, the not hand.
Okay.
Yeah, it makes sense that way. I like that.
Like pre-flop, it's always aces.
Okay.
Like if I was using it for here, it would be three point five seven would be like my cut-off.
Yeah, also, I mean, I think we have to. Look at this saw with a grain of salt, right? Because this is. I, I wonder how much this, this particular all-in on button is actually sold down to.
Oh, I think it's much more of a thing in a weak population than it's gonna be.
I can, I have a really simple answer here. When, when the solver gets to something like this, it just spits out the MDF answer.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I, let me pull it up.
Which makes sense. That's what it should be defaulted to.
And then it spreads it and, and then spreads it. Because you could do that MDF all in ace ten and ace nine. You don't need any ace four.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I was looking at this to see if there's any suit differences.
Like redistributes the, uh, redistribute. Redistributes the, uh, calling equity.
Ace four has more equity than ace six and ace seven. I guess that's because, um, ace six and ace seven might be blocking something. I don't know.
They're more likely to have sevens and eights than they are to have threes and fours.
But I mean, to be quite honest. We, we are checking range. Or I mean, we're betting range. There's no way we should have checked here.
Yeah.
So I have a very similar hand if we want to look at that. Sound good, guys?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, whoever has hands. As long as we get to everybody who at least one hand of everybody.
Sure. I got two prepped for whenever.
So, um, you guys see my screen?
We got the fucking kings, baby.
Yeah, so, well, we got a five X ETG. We get a flat. What size are you guys gonna use here with kings?
Twenty.
Twenty-one. Yeah.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, so I'll think of kind of the same.
Do we go down a little bit because of the large open?
Do you mean we go down in, uh, three red size?
Yeah, down to eighteen because the pot, because it's gonna get us a, a fabulous SPR anyway.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I think there's some merit to that. I mean, that's why I was thinking twenty instead of twenty-one, but that's a very small difference. So, but that.
I mean, I think my main motivation here is. My main goal is to not go multi-way.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
Um, so.
I don't want to see that.
Why?
It's gonna be hard to not go multi-way here, by the way.
Don't want to let anybody with an ace realize equity. It's just. Going to any flop with two players versus three players, the value of the hand, value of your kings goes down significantly when you bring in a third player compared to two.
So Derek, it's, yeah, Derek, it's, it, we had this, we've had this one before and, and, and there are two competing things here. One is I get, I get to go pocket kings for a bigger, you know, for a bigger pot when I get the extra guy in. The other thing is my, my share of the equity goes down. Um.
Right, I agree.
Those, those are the two things that are competing and, and you tend towards the, um, I want the bigger pot. Uh, if you. If you do the math of looking at your equity, you know, equity times the size of the pot, you know, what is your dollar share? You do better, um, with, with the five big blinds folding because his money is dead. He loses all his equity. So.
Okay.
Prefer to do that, but if to do it, you have to go all in and then they both fold and that's not optimal. That's not good. And it's gonna be difficult in this because the initial razor is so much the guy who's most likely to call. And when he calls that twenty. Uh, SC one, uh, you know, um. Uh, player thirteen forty-eight. Is gonna be getting, you know, nice pot odds and he's, and he was willing to call an oversized bet there. So he's probably coming in. You're probably going multi-way.
Agreed.
But, but that's why, is those two things compete. But if you do, if you do the, if you just multiply the things out, you will generally find. That going, that if you can get it heads up and not go multi-way, you have, you have more, you will make more money in the long run. Multiply your equity times the size of the pot, each, in each case, and it's gonna be a little bit bigger.
Okay.
Right.
All right, so then it gets weird. We get a flat from fish.
Wow.
But now everybody. Razor calls and this guy folds. Um, and then it gets even more strange. So we've got a pot of sixty-six bigs.
What, he dunk jams? Yeah.
Dunk jam.
Fold kings.
But it's, but he's, but he's, but he's a fish on a broken stack.
Yeah, no, he, he wanted to play an ace and he hit his ace and now he's excited. So he's piling all the money on.
He probably has an ace.
But it's only half pot.
But you, but how often do you have to be right? You're wrong most of the time. Most of the time he has an ace. My question is, does he have an ace? Uh, let's, let's do the thing. Does he have an ace? More than.
You only gotta be right twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
So I decided twenty-five percent was enough. Um. I don't, I, yeah, I don't think we can fold to these pot odds. I think this is a pot odds game.
What is your equity here versus his range roughly?
Well, we don't know his range. The question is, does he do this? With less than an ace or pocket queens more than twenty-five percent of the time?
I'd say no and fold.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I mean, I think you're, you're thinking about it right, but I think he has an ace or better.
Yep.
Ninety percent of the time.
And you fold.
I agree.
What, what, give me the range of hands that you think he does, does it with that you beat. I mean, just hypothetically.
That we beat? Bad players I've seen do this with like sevens, eights, nines and tens, which is just a completely bad spewy play.
Yeah, I could see him in there with like queen jack.
Let's also think about pre too, guys. So like, can we go here, twenty, he flats. Let's think about what this. He's on a broken stack here and he puts in what?
Two. Like that's insane.
Forty percent of his stack.
Yeah.
He's putting in forty percent of his stack. And. How often, instead of just forty percent of a stack, is he gonna just shove ace, ace X? Is he gonna shove ace queen?
Well, if he plays like this, we don't have any way to know that because he's so far away from any sort of, uh, established theory.
Yeah, I think. My, my argument is I don't know how much this is. How much is this a fish wanting to see a flop in gambling and how much of this is? And, and then how much of it is ace X? I think that this.
I think that it's both. I think that's largely most of the time of fish wanting to see a flop with like ace four suited or something along those lines, right?
Yeah, maybe.
That's how I think of it.
Well, I just got it down to pot odds. And said that. Um, we've got, yeah, we've got enough. Equity to call against what this range is. And this time I was right. And, yeah, he was, he was freaking out.
Yeah, wow.
Yeah, a guy like that, I mean. Yeah, I don't know. I would have folded that. I mean, you obviously.
Hang on.
By the way, I think I, I, my inflection point, and this is pure like non. Math, well, it's semi-math is, is half pot. When I look at these one-third pot, pot-sized bets on the river, the odds are so strong that I'm, I'm abandoning the just fold, they always have it attitude. Um, when it gets closer to half pot, which this is, um, I, I tend to find myself regretting calls.
So those are pot odds. That's twenty-five percent you need, you said, right?
Yeah, Josh, question on that. Is that when he chooses to bet thirty, like he's got two hundred big blinds and he bets thirty or he bets? Yeah, so like this is different, yeah. This is different, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. What I can say is that. We are trying to analyze this through our thought process. And not the thought process of a fish. A thought process of a fish with a queen is gonna say, oh, the ace is paired. It's less likely he has an ace. I'm good.
I don't even know if a fish is gonna be thinking that deeply. Like, I don't think that they observe blocker effects that often.
I agree with that comment. I'm thinking sort of.
I've played enough live games. See, the difference in playing a lot of live versus a lot of online. Is when people make an idiotic mistake, they'll tell you why they made the idiotic mistake.
Okay, sure.
And I've heard people say this. Over and over and over again. Oh, there were two aces on the board. I didn't think you had one.
Okay.
Okay.
That is a good, that is a, that is a valuable thing for Mr. Queen six suited.
Even before he showed his hand, I said he has queen ten.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, I've got another one. There's a lot of the people that want to share, right? Other people have hands?
Yep, let's do it.
We do.
Do one of, uh, we have a king hand to do and then we'll come and we'll loop back for second hands. Right.
Oh, do you mind?
Yep.
Okay.
So hit share.
Pull up to here. Okay, bear with me here, just a moment. Uh, share, 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 share.
And while you're doing that, Mike, have you shared one yet? Or did you do one earlier? Okay, so Mike's next.
Uh. Sorry, I'm just having difficulty finding this here.
Uh, oh, the share button?
Yeah.
Shift S in a Mac, Ctrl, Shift S in a PC.
Yeah, that's not. Yeah, that's not doing anything for me here.
Uh, click on zoom.
I'll try to figure this out. Um, I'll get it going if we can do another.
Alright, Mike, you're up.
I'll figure this out.
Right. Let's go to that. You guys see the chat on the side there's. Okay, alright, ace queen. Um, probably some context with the HUD here. Let's show it. Um, the villain here, you'll see, we'll get a a limp over here from a passive villain who we can assume is pretty fishy. Sizing.
That works.
Yeah.
Pretty normal. No, no objections.
Yeah, it you know, the the exact theory is five, but this is great.
Yeah.
Uh, the big line as well is a villain here.
Five and a half, so.
Yeah, this is great.
Okay. Uh, the villain uh in the big blind because we do get called by the original limber as well, so. Multi-handed here.
Love spot.
Check.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I think checking and see what develops is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. Uh.
Totally.
I always wonder if 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 leading against two fish. Like exploitively, like checking is is kind of, you know, obviously that theory based, you know, we should kind of be checking a lot. Basically ranged, but do we can we exploit and try to get value, but?
Yep. You don't have to exploit to get value. He's gonna do it for you. Oh, my.
Alright, I know I'm gonna sound like a nit, but I fold.
Yep, this is a Joey fold.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see it. I'm definitely not raising. I mean, I think seeing a turn is completely reasonable and.
So why what? Why are you folding? What are you?
Make your speech, Joey.
In multi-way pots, single pair hands don't win often enough. To stay in when there's action.
When it's contested.
This was if this was a bet fold, I'm not going anywhere. But once the second player calls. Your hand is either ahead slightly. Against draws with a lot of outs or way behind.
Alright, I do have a comment on that.
Right.
My comment is I completely agree with you. However, not here.
Yeah, I think on this exact board.
Not in this exact situation.
Yeah.
Um, so I I do agree, like if you're way behind or flipping fold, which is I think what you said. However, so I go back, I always am saying, what's the value? What's the buffs? So the value here is any ace. Or a lot of aces. The buffs are diamonds. From your. Diamonds in 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 wheel draws. And so I think my kicker is too good to abandon this hand at this point. Even under the if you're way behind or flipping full uh maximum.
Yeah, the value that I'm concerned about here is deuce, deuce and eight eight, which is a huge number of combos.
Oh, no, so I get that, but so if you so, yeah, sure, I when I said the value, I mean, there's a lot more ace X. Um, value betting than deuce, deuce, just because there's not a lot of deuce, deuce. Moreover. Even though the forty-six forty-two isn't folding deuce, deuce, somebody is. So in this case, maybe deuce, deuce is there, but but I I would, I just say there's enough aces in in a value range. For ma- making my kicker to be okay. I I I probably start fall off really quickly, like ace ten's a fold. Ace jack.
Yeah, yeah, I'm with you.
But ace queen is a little hard to fold at this point. Considering ace king is not any of these ranges, I'm sorry, is I'm gonna say the word discounted, just so I don't get this on it, okay? It's discounted because they didn't re-raise your bet.
So that's. And I mean, a lot of turns will be folds too. I I'm sure you would concede. Like if you call here, you're probably.
So that gets, then I have star ranging these guys in this forty-two forty-six. Well, it's weird because he's aggressive. He's not a forty-two ten or forty-two.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But it's only six twenty-six hands.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know. I mean, I where I give up is a question I'm not giving up on the flop.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, let's let's see what happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, I tended towards the, we're just a little bit too high up to fold yet. Um, but. We got a check, right? There's nobody that's gonna donk here.
No way, zero.
Checks through.
Check, check.
But now how do you feel about your hand before you move on?
Uh, now I feel now I feel much better. Much, much better.
Much, so let's so. Question about this run out. Sorry, question. So do you guys look at this run out and say this is a good run out or a bad run out?
I feel like it's a great run out. It's in the middle. I mean, we'll give it given the turn action. Yeah, because when certainly when the eight paired, it didn't like that, but then when it checked through, you like it more. So this is an okay run out.
Uh, except for one thing.
I'm not looking to pile more money in here, but it's not.
No, no, we don't bet it, but there is a hand that makes complete sense. Um. That this is a terrible run out for us against. And that's ace jack. No, ace deuce.
What is it?
Ace deuce. He bets the two pair. He gets counterfeited.
That's a good point.
And then he boats up.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
There's only one, is it one combo though of ace deuce?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I think we check call here.
I I I use the word check evaluate. I mean, if it goes check, that call, I'm I'm done.
Yeah, agree with that. Agree with that. Yeah, then it which could you ever dock here? Could you ever lead out? Not dock, but lead out.
I think there might be some merit to, well, like a ten percent, like almost blocker.
Yeah.
Almost a blocker, but but it would also function as a thin value bet, so.
Well, hold on, we 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 checked. We don't have the right to bluff. I mean, what's changed in our range that? Gives us the right to start bluffing?
Nothing's really changed, but you kind of have a good idea where you're at in that spot. I mean, all of that being said, I do prefer. The uh the checking option, but I think there's some merit to.
Someone take a shot with blown diamonds, then then block to the.
Well, I'm not excited to look them up if they do, like I'm really, really not excited to call any sort of sizable bet on this river.
No, it was it was a different question. Go back and ask your question again. He was saying something different.
Okay.
Me?
Yeah, yeah, you you.
I guess I misunderstood.
Well, I mean, so my question, I think, was what's changed that it gives you the right to take back the initiative once you've given it up? And that's a heuristic, which is you've got to see um. You you've got to see a change in order to grab it back.
And here's the change. The change is the check, check on the turn. I'm not saying.
I don't like that change. I mean, you're right. That's right. You're right.
I guess I I'm not trying to grab back the initiative by block betting the river. I'm mostly just trying to get to a. A show a showdown as cheaply as possible. Like, I'm not like, oh, I'm good here. I'm going for value. It's like, I want to see showdown with this combo versus these two ranges. But I don't want to call a thirty-five big blind bet.
Yeah, I honestly, I don't know the answer. I you might be right. I mean, I I just.
Saying I know it either.
I I just, I in this case, I actually would rather um. Induce, I also, it gives me the opportunity to see if there are two people calling.
Yeah.
And I mean, I I just, you know, but I don't know.
I I I argue against block the block bet here because. The block bet is also an indication in general of thin value. Thin value is an ace, not an eight.
Yep.
And is an invitation to be but, you know, you block bet, you block bet to induce. You know, bet small to induce, you bet you bestie. When you want, when when you're ready to call that and you don't want to call that, that was the whole reason. So you're. You're block betting to not have to call a big bet and that's and so you're trusting two people to not look at that and go. Look at that and go, I know why you're doing this. I will make your life hell.
Yeah, then you have.
So I would rather, so I would rather, I would rather check. And call and call a single bet.
And and as I'm checking and thinking about this, which is if if the big blind bets in this and the other guy calls, I'm done.
Right.
If the big blind, the the best situation for me facing a bat. Is if the um seventy-eight seventy-eight big blind guy bets it for a smallish amount. Let's say under half pot. Um, and I'm calling that all day long. The middle one is if that bet came from the ninety-one fifty-eight big blind guy. Uh, and the other guy folds. There I might want to see a smaller bet and get better odds.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's the way I, but I'm I'm thinking about that before I check, so I'm.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
I don't I don't talk myself into or out of it afterwards.
And the only and the only guy I'm putting on ace deuce here is.
Big blind.
I don't think P two has ace deuce. I'm not saying P seven has ace deuce, by the way. I'm saying he's the one who I ha- I who I have ace deuce in his range and I don't have any P two's range. Let's go, push some buttons.
Uh, the the rest is is final checks through and we win, but.
Yeah.
I I was I was really worried about checking through and then seeing ace, jack, ace, ten, ace, not whatever, you know, and not getting that. Not getting that thin value.
No, I I think that's totally fine to just pot like. Yeah. Any double paired board where big blind range is in play, I don't think you're ever gonna be making making a mistake by not going for value with what amounts to a one pair. Combo.
See, also though, that the seven-seven, that doesn't happen often.
No, no.
Multi-way pots, who's gonna bet pocket sevens on that board?
Yeah, exactly.
You know, we talked about this before and. Aggression um VP IP uh and uh is that an infinite aggression factor?
Yes.
Yeah, but it's over twenty-six.
Yeah, over twenty-six.
I I agree with you, Joey. I think that nines, tens, jacks are more likely to do that. Than than sevens.
One point I think to make here is that I question how much people don't stab. Yeah, I think there's. A lot of stabbing that goes on when the RFI. Aggressor in a hand like this checks out of position. Because I think it's unusual. I think it's good theory that Mike's playing, however, I think humans. Are going to see that at a higher frequency. And so I think recreational, which could put kind of both these guys on. Are going to stab at a higher frequency than they should in a multi-way pot.
Seven-seven's kind of the perfect combo to not stab with, though, in that spot also.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think a lot of people make that mistake, but in that they don't, they don't look at it that way. Um, and this is an example of that. I mean, he's saying, oh, my God, there's a flush draw on the board. I better try to get rid of it.
See, also the problem with multi-way pots. Is you're not just against two cards, you're against four cards.
Yeah. Absolutely.
So. Even if say one of them had a weaker ace. And the other guy has a flush draw like he has, you're still out against fifteen fourteen cards. That makes you. You you're ahead now, but there are fourteen outs against you. So you are actually an underdog, even if you're ahead now.
Well, let's let Peter see and look at at equity. I mean, can you show cards up and then go back to the flop?
Yeah.
And we'll show us, it'll show us the equity.
Yeah, you're an under, you're an underdog um equity wise, but remember. You're you're so you're less than fifty percent against the field, but you're putting in significantly less than fifty percent of the money. So that's that just.
It says I've got fifty percent at seven percent equity here. What what?
Well, because the seven-seven should have never bet. The.
He's saying against not seven-seven, against ace, against um an ace, ace nine.
So can you run equal ad against um against ace jack? I mean, I think it's, I mean, I'm, I have less equity against sevens, uh, ace jack.
No, you have you, yeah. Against more, let's see.
I have more equity there. Well, no, I have. The bottom line is it's the same situation.
No, because he has one has three outs and the other has two outs.
So I think, you know, looking at this more broadly, can I take away is that?
The guy who shouldn't have bet, I'm sorry, Kaya.
Yeah, that's alright. Um, more broadly, my point is that. Checking is the right play here. Mike played the right play. However, it requires us to. Get in the mindset of playing defensively. And bluff catching more than being aggressive is. And that's that's really, I think, it's a mindset change to bluff catch rather than being the aggressor.
Okay, so I do have a comment on that, which is, this is the thing that I I have, I try to remember, and this is, again, I'm mostly channeling Andrew Broco there. Um, when you're out of position, you're in a bad spot. Okay, you're gonna lose a lot. It's not good. It's just as simple as that. And so you're right. And the more you try to offset that, the more you're gonna get in trouble.
So Broca says a really good series on a different poker training site. Um. About playing out of position, which I took a lot away from actually this month. And.
What? Did I do that wrong?
And he said just associated with you just said, Josh.
Yeah, that. I I I'm a huge fan of his and and.
Seven-seven, where did the? The ace jack come from?
Is a better bet than seven-seven.
Okay.
We're just looking at the equity here and you can see we're still fifty-three percent.
Right, and actually that's. Let's make that not ace, make that ace ten. So that the jack is so so that this guy has a two pair out that he has. Yeah, that that is.
Chat for the flop.
Another percent. Yeah, so. You know, it it.
Yeah, the difference, the the. Where the thing is interesting is now give him ace king instead of ace ten. And the point is. And I mean, I'm simulating simply um if we had a work with kicker, this whole thing started when Joey said correctly. I'm not so sure I I don't want to just fold here because.
Yeah.
You know, I could be way behind or flipping, and this is the example. You can see how horrible that is, right?
Absolutely.
And and but look at them, so so you've got to figure out where that line is and. Um. It again, ace queen, I think is just too high up.
Yeah.
But this it just shows, it illustrates the massive difference between. Do I think I'm up against two flush draws or do I think I'm up against, you know, made hand or flush draw? In this case, the made hand we beat and it changes everything.
Yeah.
And I think we can discount ace king because of the action.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
Right.
I mean, Joe, Joey has other made made a different point talking about multi-way pots is that. It's very hard to understand where you are in this in this situation and your equity and the value you have is very murky. And we could pick better spots, heads up. Where it's very clear that we're exploiting a lesser player like these two are, right? We're sitting with two fish at a table. We could pick a different heads-up spot and we can be more clearly ahead and we can get all the money then. And there's an argument for that, right? Because this is a more murky, tougher situation to sort.
Yeah, and you're kind of guessing, like, you have top pair. You could already be behind. Are you gonna fold to a turn bet? Probably not. If the turn's a blank like it was, are you gonna fold?
What am I behind? That's the.
Versus a certain size.
I think you're right. I mean, if I, but the question is, what am I?
Ace eight, ace eight, ace two, pocket eights, pocket twos.
Yeah, and and I'm ahead of all of the other aces and all of the pocket pairs below the that play stupid.
But not that far. See, that that's a problem. You're not that far ahead because you can never know if you're actually still ahead.
So here's an example, here's a just.
And then the other person you either has a made hand or a draw too.
Well, I'm not, I'm not gonna argue with you because I I I essentially agree with your main point. I I just think that you have to say, what's the value? You're listing off all these hands that I think are pretty infrequent compared to, if I list all of the hands that are possible versus the hands that you listed. I think there's a lot more that are possible that I beat and that's what you're.
Yes, but the one more thing on Joey's side of it is, this has been mentioned before, but I want to point out how it happened here. We're out of position against two players, which sucks doubly, and the way we saw that was with our hand, once we knew we had it, we still could never bet it. So when we had, and we didn't make any more money, but when we don't have the best hand, we're gonna lose more money.
I was just trying to go through my HUD. To sep- separate from multi-way and I have hold a manager instead of PT four.
Mm-hmm.
And I can't figure out a way to just sort out all my multi-way hands. But I'm. I fold, I don't lose money in multi-way pots. I fold, I don't lose money in multiway pots. That's just something I.
And. I I again, I think your basic theme is a hundred percent correct. I mean, I I don't I I don't know. I I think you're you're I I'm. The comment I made was I think this is the exception. Your your basic idea is really powerful. Which is you're out of position, you're multiway, give your you only have a pair and give it up.
And I'm kind of in the middle of you guys where it's like, I think it's good to call that flop, but I think it's totally fine to get away from a lot of turns. So.
Here is the lesson that I want to take from it for me and I suggest for you guys is. When you're in the multiway pot, channel your inner Joey and and only violate it when you can come up with a very good reason. So if your instinct is just you go, I probably have the best hand, you're not channeling your inner Joey enough. Think about it and look at it and say, I probably, you know, I'm going to fold almost all of them. Why am I not doing this one? And if you can come up with a good enough reason, do that and see how often you're right.
If I was heads up, I'm not folding.
No, 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 we're talking.
Bet fold, I'm not folding.
But or no, heads up, don't don't channel your inner Joe. He plays terrible heads up.
I didn't hear.
Also, the bet was large. If the bet was tiny and it went bet call, then I call.
Yeah, yeah, I bet pot.
Sure.
And by the way, this to some extent, um, although I I think it applies in in live cash games. If if you never call that, um, because it's multiway, you're just never playing. I mean, you're, they're all fucking multiway.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, no, no, that's, that's not really true. A lot of pots are multiway, but there isn't action. Post swap all the time.
That is true also, actually, yeah. Check, 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 check.
Yeah, so to remind, so to to state Joey's Joey's basic multiway thing is that in a multiway pot. Where the pot where the pot is contested by two players other than you, one pair does not win often enough. To to merit going on.
Yeah, and I agree with that, as I said.
Not not folding multiway pots or that one pair is enough.
I've got a very, very wacky hand on this exact point, if you want to see that.
Post it.
Okay, this one was one of the weirdest pots I've ever played. I posted this on the Discord. And Joey did want to fold on the flop same way, so I just posted a link in the chat.
Okay.
This is, I I cannot think of when I have ever seen a three bet pot go four way to the river.
Oh, you gotta come to my time.
Here we go. All right, we got ace queen. We raise it and we raise to probably twenty, I'm going to guess, when with the small blind being a five instead of fifteen.
We raised from under the gun and under the gun plus one, we raised to three X and all of the positions we raised four X.
Right, okay. Right, that works. All right, we get three bet.
So we're immediately hit by a UTG plus one player who I. All I can say about him is he doesn't seem terrible. Uh, I don't want to, I don't want to say he's good because I don't know that he's good, but he hasn't done anything that's objectively terrible.
His sizing is completely reasonable. Five bigger than.
And then. As you know, the rule, never, ever, ever haul a three bet hold, right? Never, ever, ever.
Yeah, you four bet.
That's what hijack does.
Right. And.
And keep going.
Call a three bet cold?
Yeah, here's the here's why, here's why Derek. Um, you look at it and you say, if the hand is good enough to play, good enough to four bet. Or another way to put it, it's only good enough to play if you can four bet it. Um, and then in this particular situation, it is highly egregious because the configuration here of uh, how many players we got. Um, uh, cutoff, low cut off hijack, low jack, okay, supreme tree.
The strongest two positions.
Yeah, is the strongest two positions at this table. Um, they're not, it's not quite, it's not undergun nine way, but it's still. We're still eight handed under the gun, you know, so it's still that these are. Um, our hero is uncapped. He can have aces, he can come over the top. You're throwing money away here. Um, and these guys are super tight. If you were going to make this mistake. Because it went button raised, small blind three bet and you were in the big blind and you made the mistake of calling that. It's not an egregious mistake, but it's still better to play for better fold. But in this case, it's a mistake and it's egregious.
Oh, just wait.
I know. Right.
Oh, just wait.
This is, this is very bad, but maybe less egregious than this.
So was this a Saturday night?
I, I don't remember.
It was, you don't remember because you were too drunk or was it, you don't remember because?
No, this was a while ago. I can't remember what day it was. Think it was a Sunday afternoon, but I'm not sure.
I think the small blinds call is more egregious than the hijacks call. Sorry, low Jack's call. So I think this is the worst play so far.
How deep are you?
You know, and this is I, this is live poker, so I I I I remember that. I was two hundred blinds deep with UTG plus one. I really don't remember anybody else, so I just put in a hundred blinds because that was probably close to right.
Yeah, so you have two options here, I think. Do you know what they are?
Jam and fold.
Jam and fold.
I think that I I think four bet less than jam is an option too.
That I don't remember that because you're just going to go fifty million base.
Um, there, there's already fifty three big blinds in the middle.
Yeah, jamming is jam, jamming is the size, but I don't think a call here is terrible. You're suited.
But it was suited, ma.
I mean, you gotta, you're gonna flap a draw. What are you going to do? Let's let's play the, let's play that out, okay? So you call.
Flop a draw and check raise.
Flop a draw and go all in? Get all in, whether you better to.
All two, what is that, three hundred dollars in the pot? You call, here's the problem with that is. Do you want to go to the flop out of position with an SPR of three with a with a draw?
I mean, I don't.
I want my, I, yes.
Yes. Yes, for seven big, for the cost of seven big blinds. Out of sixty.
Matt, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think I might have said I fold here when you posted this hand before.
I believe you did. And I I think I can't fold. I'm that the odds are just too good, even though. It's a long shot. I'm probably going to lose this hand, but you know, I I just, I I just can't. Fold a hand with not potential particularly.
Same thing as Josh that. Yeah, you ha- you have a potential flush draw, but the SPR is going to be so low, it won't benefit to have a flush draw.
Let's dream up a hand just to follow through on that comment, Joey, where you flop your flush draw. Okay, let's say the flop comes nine, six, three, two hearts. What's your play?
I would like to go broke, please.
Obviously, you're happy, you're not happy, but you're willing to get all in.
What's the likelihood that one of these one, two, three, four, five players has? A made hand that he feels like he has a made hand with an SPR of three, so let's call that any nine or. Better. Um, or maybe even the eight, sevens, I think I said nine, six, so the eights and sevens. Um, that's never going to fold. Like, what's the probability that?
That's pretty likely.
Pretty likely. So you're going to go.
But you're in decent, like you're, you have a lot of equity against.
King, hold on, let him let him finish the question.
No, you have two overs and a flush draw. And so, I mean, maybe, I I mean, I have to think about that, but that's, yeah. So the the other comment I'd make is you're not calling for the odds, you're jamming for the dead money. And when I say dead, I know they're still in my hand, so I'm going.
I love the way you put that. You're not calling for the odds, you're jamming for the dead money. Yeah, that's great.
I think, look, I mean, we know. Certainly, anyone who cold called this three bet cannot call a jam. They're all folding. Sorry, under the gun plus one.
Exactly. You're you're playing as one player and if you jam, what does, what do, what do a lot of people range you? Including a solid player. What's your range?
You know, I mean, very tight, uh, aces, kings, ace queen, maybe queens. Uh, you know, it's a very thin range, but also his range is very tight. I mean, he three bet. A tight under the gun razor. I mean, he's got to have some good shit.
That's what I, all right, what I, first of all, I want to correct something. These players should not have any hands that they are willing to get in, but weak players do not think about a hand the same way we do. They are going to have hands they want to see a flop with.
For a thousand dollars.
And they will still do it with some of their, like, you think they're going to fold a pocket pair?
Uh, pocket fives, I think, it depends.
They should, but have you played enough fish?
Yeah, they should.
To realize that they will still call off a pocket fives.
Well, if they do, how do I feel about having ace queen suited? I'm not so bad. I'm fifty five percent against.
I mean, I think, look, the answer to my opinion on the answer to Joey's question is. They will call at low frequency. I think most of the time they will fold pocket fives. Sometimes they will call it. And if they do, fuck it, it's okay.
And I will concede that they will do that at moderate frequency and I still feel okay. And by the way, because it's the UTG plus one guy. And because you've ranged him a solid, I lean towards fold here.
Yeah, and it.
But what I don't do is I don't call for odds to get to an SPR three out of position with a drawing hand.
It's how? How tight do we think under the gun plus one is? I mean.
I mean, I can't.
If they don't have a bluffing range, we're behind his whole range.
Yeah.
Because his non bluffing range is tens plus ace, king offsuit and ace queen.
Maybe ace five suited if he's really, if he's been studying, if he's come to.
He's saying if he doesn't have a bluffing range. If he doesn't have a bluff.
We don't beat any of his value. You're right. We tie. Maybe, yeah, we don't beat him as well. You're right.
Now, for what it's worth, I do, I I have been working with a coach. I I. I will share that his recommendation was four bet to two seventy five and fold to a shove from under the gun plus one.
That makes sense. I like it. I folded, I folded in this spot and then I feel like an absolute net afterwards, but I mean.
Did you see it played? I mean, would you be, why do you feel like a net?
Sorry, eating.
Um, why do you feel like?
Cause you fold and then two, three, four hearts comes on the flop.
Yeah, it's just like, I mean, all logic, I'm, logic supports the fold very much the way that it was explained here. Um, it's just such a pretty hand when you fold it, when you're getting those type of odds, you're just like, wow. It just, it seems nitty, you know what I mean? But.
Let me.
I think that's like a self, a self leveling thing going on.
If we can somehow run this in a solver. I'm pretty sure ace queen suited will fold in a solver.
I think you're probably right.
Okay, so I want to make, I'm going to make one argument in favor of the jam again for the, on team jam. Which is team jam and we get mo- and and we do get calls, okay? That's what's going to, that we we get calls, even multi calls. With. How how much equity do I need to have in the hand for me to be fine with being all in here? I don't want to be all in against ace king. But if I'm against a couple of other pocket pairs, I only need thirty three percent of the equity. If somebody does it with a worse ace and there's a pocket pair, that's pretty bad because my ace is blocked. I hate that. Um. That that dead, all that extra dead money there. Does that make up for my deficit against under the gun plus one when he does, when he calls? So I jam it under the gun plus one folds. I think we get a lot of folds behind us. And even if, you know, even if somebody mistakenly calls with pocket fives of which we're flipping, we're flipping against a lot of dead money. I'm happy with that. How much does that extra two hundred dollars in the pot make up for? My disadvantage against under the gun plus one's calling range. And now that I've said it out loud, not enough. Okay. I'm done with my argument. I don't, I just argued myself out of it.
We're not done. This hand just gets crazier, so let's go ahead.
All right, we call, we call. Yay. I like that mistake. That's the one I wanted. Thank you.
I, and I said, I think I said this on the Discord too. I have never been so unexcited to flop top pair top kicker.
Nor should you be.
But now, at least. We know with an SPR that now we at least miserable it's going to be.
Can I, can we, before we move on?
Yes.
You just said you're unexcited about flopping top pair top kicker.
That's a good reason to fold.
Right.
Free flop.
Well, what do you, what did you do? Call or did you raise?
Called, called.
I called pre, I called the three bet pre.
Okay, so you go to the flop with an SPR of three against a zillion people, you flop top, top. Um, you're losing to this, everybody's got nines and fours. That's what we've been talking about. That's what people do. Well, actually, maybe. Maybe nine's raises, but maybe not, I don't know. Um, so, I mean, I don't know, I think you're winning this hand. I mean, I could be wrong, but.
Well, I could be winning this hand. I guess what I meant by not excited is usually when you flop top pair top kicker, you're fist pumping. I'm going to win this hand. I'm sitting here saying, fuck, I've got to put more money into this hand. I have no fucking idea where I am.
Yeah, no, I'm with you completely.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not, don't get me wrong, but I'm not, uh, but you know, I'm not fist pumping is all I'm saying.
Yeah. Yeah, you're not looking to pile more money on with the everything that's.
Besides the pocket nines and the pocket fours, because queen nine, four, there's not a lot of two pair here, right? A lot of the, you you, I think a lot of people are folding queen nine and. Nine, four, so.
And it's also the combos that you named. Once there's this many players in the hand, it's just the likelihood of one of those combos falling into one of these hands goes up exponentially, right? So.
Uh, no, I think that you just, I think that it's unlikely they all have it. And so. I mean, I agree that it's more than if you were just against two people, but it's not a lot more. I think your biggest problem is you're you're out of position against the guy who could beat you, which is UTG one.
Sure.
Yeah. So I don't, so I check, of course. I think this is a easy check.
Yeah, I check for sure.
Sixty five into three hundred.
That's small.
That's like what, eighteen?
It's that small is reasonable.
For what it's worth, I think I may have made, I think there may have been one fewer callers, but it doesn't matter much.
Yeah.
Messy.
So what do I do here? I mean.
I I call, I mean, look at. I mean, everything in mind that we've been talking about, look at what you have to call, look at the odds that you're getting, look at your combo, look at your equity. I think it's a pretty reasonable call.
Yeah, but now, now I'm not happy. I mean, but but I will say.
I wouldn't be either.
It's such a small.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would like to say that you have backdoor hearts.
Yeah, absolutely, that too.
And what if I told you I would have folded without backdoor hearts and I called with backdoor hearts?
I think that's very reasonable. I like it.
I, I don't know what we even.
I think drawing to two outs is enough to, even if you think you're, because I I think I I wouldn't fold it, I would not fold that two hearts. I I would stay with ace queen offsuit.
What a terrible good card.
What can it be worse?
That is the worst good card in the deck. All right.
Well, it simplifies my play. I mean, I honestly, I like that card because like my poor brain is tortured and now I'm thinking, well. Now I'm for sure behind, but I'm surely not going anywhere.
Makes your decision easier.
All right. I don't. Has ace.
Nine of hearts.
Yeah, that's what it's going to be.
Did you know this hand? Are you shitting me?
No, no, I.
No, it would just be just a shit.
Yeah, it made sense that that that's what it would be.
Terrible, wonderful cards on turn and river.
All right, now here I think. Alright, now here I think I blundered big.
Yeah.
Well, that means you bet then, right?
No, I checked.
Oh, no, I.
I mean, I think I'm jamming here and trying to get called by nine. I, I don't care about the, if I lose two, but I lose two boat.
I'm an idiot. I didn't even notice we made a flush. I thought we were still sitting here with a queen. Okay.
Oh, no, no.
I will excuse myself now.
I mean, I could be wrong here, but I'm jamming. And this is where like, you don't want to lose the value. And you know, you're sitting in a book room for five hours, you finally get a.
No, I check here. I mean, check call for the most part.
I think when I saw this online, I was saying like better around two hundred.
Yeah, I think that's right, and I think that's the right play.
Yeah, you could be right. I don't know. I mean, I could be wrong, but.
Okay.
With three other people in the hand on the paired board, I don't really see a major reason to bet with two people behind you here. I think Chuck calling is fine.
Okay.
Well, I guess the question is, if you were, if there was a set of fours out there on the turn, wouldn't it bet, it checked it, it checked around, right?
Not necessarily multi-way with that many people.
Yeah, there's a set of fours and a flush draw comes, you don't think he's protecting his equity by betting?
Yeah, the only guy who wouldn't be.
He should.
Big blind. The big blind, he doesn't know that under the gun one is gonna shut down on that king.
Right. So, so the question, the question, I mean, I think I checked. And I think that was a mistake. But I think the question that makes it a little closer than it might seem is, what is hauling me here? What is hauling? I mean, it's very, it's possible, but very improbable. There's another flush out there. I, it's, I mean, i- if you're sitting there with, you know, what?
Nine eight.
I mean, Ace King, I mean, you're not calling. Yeah, I'm not, I mean.
Nine, nine, eight, ten, eight.
Nine calls, but you really have to stretch to find calls.
Check eight.
I think it's just too easy for one of these guys to show up with King nine, pocket fours. I mean, Queen nine less likely, but it's still in there, like.
Remember the free flop action.
Yeah.
But I think the real question is.
Oh, yeah, that was crazy.
I think the real question is how inelastic are the calls? So when, once you identify hands that are calling you, how much will they call you for?
Well, with the way the pre-flop action went, they're probably not that inelastic.
I think a nine is, I think a nine is calling you, uh, calling an all-in.
I think a nine is calling all-in, and I think the rare flush is calling all-in.
Right.
Matthew, did your, uh, did your coach you mentioned, did he give you a sizing suggestion here?
Uh, well, he said.
Still like the check best.
He said, uh, he, he said bet, but he said bet two hundred fifty-ish, but that my check wasn't as bad as I thought. I thought this was just an awful check. And he's like, yeah, it was bad, but it wasn't that bad.
Yeah, okay. I don't see how it's bad. I really don't like that. Doesn't.
Does he mean bad or does he mean not as good?
Cause you're not getting value and you're.
Right. Yeah, his point was the range of hands that will haul a value bet is vanishingly thin. And I think we've identified, and I think it's a nine.
Yeah.
Uh, but like, look, even if you're UTG plus one and you've got aces, which you could, he's not gonna call.
But he's checking back, so there's no harm in betting.
Right, so.
That's, that's the point is, if, if all of the hands that call you are inelastic, and I'm theorizing that they would, um, bet big. Now, I, by the way, I, I don't think I know the difference between, I mean, I, I, I think that you're gonna see a, you're gonna see a, you know, a three hundred dollar bet and an all-in bet, you know, similarly.
Okay.
So you went, in, in the question of what is wrong with decking? It's this. When we put in this thirty-five dollars, we did it because we said, we have a hand that can make the effective nuts. And we only have to put in seven big blinds, you know, to be able to win a ton with the nuts.
Yeah.
Pay here, we make the effective nuts. There are bluffs, there, there are boats out there, but it's the effective nuts until the other way. And we get not a single penny more. We were in there.
I cannot think of that as the effective nuts in any universe, any, I can't.
Okay.
I can't get on board with that.
Alright, now, um, having said that, I want to make an argument, um, in favor of the jam over the two hundred, the two hundred. And it's the same argument from before. If we bet two hundred and we get jammed on, are we going to fold the nut flush here? You tell me.
No.
If the answer is yes, and I'm gonna say before you bet the two hundred, I want you to decide, are you going to fold the nut flush to a bet? Now, are you gonna fold the nut flush to a bet and a call and a call? Yes, fine. Um, maybe not.
I wouldn't make that two hundred bet in the first place, though. That's the.
Yeah, no, but somebody, but somebody else did. So, so to that person, I'm saying, I want you to decide whether you're going to make the call. If you are gonna make the call, then by betting two hundred, you've put yourself in the position where when they call you, they lose two hundred. You know, when they have it, they lose two hundred with a nine, but you lose um, eight hundred when they have a, when they raise you.
And that's.
My answer to that question would be, if I bet and get jammed on by under the gun plus one, who has the highest range and the most chips, I would fold. To any of the smaller stacks, I would call.
And what is he jamming that you're folding to? What's?
I, I don't, I mean, it would be an oddly played Kings or Queens, uh, but that would be it.
Yeah.
I, I think that's actually backwards.
Which one?
Well, he, if he's gonna fold under the gun one.
Okay, who do you want?
I think. Alright, he can have Kings or Queens. That's six total combos.
Mm-hmm.
The cutoff can have Queen nine, King nine. That.
Gotta be.
And there's more combos of that than the Kings or Queens.
Two combos of.
That's true, but it's really about a stack size. I mean, I'd be getting like better than ten to one or something.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know the answer, um, here, Matt, but what I, I would say is, if I were thinking this deeply about it, I would say the only bluff that would do that, there's two of them, is the nut flush flush. That's the first one. The second one is much more esoteric, which is ten jack or eight seven, where you're saying, I'm blocking the nine. Right? I'm blocking my, um, my nine.
Ten jacks are good.
It'd be very strange for a.
My point is, just to keep that little esoteric thing out of the conversation, the fact that I have the ace of hearts discounts a lot of his heart buffs. Right?
Yeah.
And so the only thing that might bluff this is the ace of hearts. And so I skew towards value even though I can't find your value. So I think you have some, there's some merit saying like, you just fold when someone bets over you on a paired board like this. I do think the nut flush might be the exception. So like, if I had Queen Jack of Hearts, um, which would be the second nuts, I might say, okay, that's a fold, but the ace of hearts isn't a call.
You might not be too far off with that.
Here's another value, value target for us. We talked about all the nines are a value target, and maybe ace, maybe an oddly played Ace King is a value target. Um, so was ten jack.
Yeah.
Big blind can have ten jacks suited.
Oh shit, I didn't even see that. Yeah.
Yeah. When you, when you put ten jack in your bluff and I said it's a straight, I go, he could call us. So, um.
Yeah, ten jack is a target. Also, I mean, it would be extremely odd not to have bet that on the turn, but whatever.
Not for, not for, not for the big blind.
There could be somebody else with a smaller flush too.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the big blind can have ten jack in his range. I think the cutoff, it's, it's, it would be very oddly played.
Anyhow, so the hand checked around and I won.
Maybe, of course you win.
Yeah.
Checks around, you win.
And did they expose, do you have, do you know what their hands were?
I do not.
That's fine, though, man. I.
Have the ability to bluff here? Like, if you bet, can you fold to every shove?
That was the, yeah, that was the question.
Well, yeah, we just had that conversation. I think that if I bet and under the gun plus one folded, who's the only one who has a lot of chips left? If, if he shoved, I would fold. Anyone else, I'd just call it off because they don't have any chips.
Yeah, okay. Can I ask you a quick aside question about live playing custom in this check around multi-way hand? Who is, once it checks around, who's obligated to show their hand first?
The big blind.
In, in, in playing order, because no one bet the, or in some games, it's the last aggressor.
Right, it varies by, it varies by room. Yeah, for that, those were the two rooms. And honestly, I don't even know what the, what the rule is.
Generally be left of the button, though, just like the way normal action would progress, I think, right?
That's right.
If there's no.
If I could tell you, if the big blind says you win and doesn't expose your cards, my strong suggestion is just exposure cards.
Yeah, and that's exactly what I.
That's Tommy Angelo, and yeah, I mean, just don't get into that game. I, the rules say you have to show your card. I mean, people. And here's the thing, and I said, I, I've got scolded once because, um, let's say big blind is a huge fish. And he says you win, this usually happens when he's bluffing. It's, you know, and you say, you gotta show your cards. He shows his cards and then leaves, because he's like, you know, you're no fun to play with.
Yeah.
Right? It, it's just not worth it. Just show your cards.
So Matthew, the big blind said.
I agree.
The big blind said, you, you win, and he buffed his card essentially.
The, the, uh, the big blind just said, I have shit. And then I just stapled my cards. I said, well, I guess I win.
Yeah.
That's the way to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I will make exceptions. I, I mean, really, I will do that unless the whoever is the one who is supposed to expose their card has been an asshole, then I will make them show their cards.
That was a fascinating hand. Thank you, Nathan.
And you went into that thinking that it was so terrible. And like, even after all this discussion we, we, we've had, I, I still stand by like, uh, check, checking river and pot controlling in that spot. I think it is completely fine.
Okay.
Alright, uh, who, who has not gotten to do a hand yet, anybody?
I found my screen share button.
Okay.
And I have my hands here.
Alright, let's do it.
Okay, so. Should, can you see my desktop here?
Well, in a second.
Poker tracker should be.
So you'll, we see, we see one little range sitting there.
Okay, do you see poker tracker?
At the pairs.
We see all the pairs. There's it is, there's poker tracker.
Okay, so you're just on a minor, minor delay here.
Yep.
Um, okay, so I believe these are just kind of nothing too crazy, just some, uh, single raise, single raise pot spots that kind of had some weird lack of range interaction going on or something like that. So. Low jack.
Is three point one two your regular size or is this?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, that's my regular sizing.
Is this six?
Pardon me? Yeah, six handed, this is NL twenty-five, so I'm sitting with.
William Big Balls. Good for you. And this has the interesting thing of a mic, of a micro stack of the thirty-five.
Yeah. Uh, okay, so Queen six three checks to me here. Um, what did I do? I believe I checked. Yeah, I did check now.
Before we go on, I mean, just to be clear, King ten is suited as a fold.
I think it's a mix.
I think it has, in six max, there's, there's a slipper for sure.
There's King ten there.
Okay.
Now, my, so I remember I pulled this up, uh, cause I run into this a lot, a queen mid-low sort of thing, mid-position, multi-way. I used to just C bet all the time. Um, but I think going multi-way, there is a lot of merit to checking here when I don't have absolute position. Okay, so it checks through and we get a brick, and this is where I go for delay turn C bet, which I like a larger sizing for, in the interest of, uh, polarizing. And we get a fold and we get a call.
So I like, I, I am, oh, I am happy with your size on the turn, but if Joey didn't have his microphone off, I think Joey would say that that would, that that should be a smaller bet on the turn. That the smaller bet accomplish is what you want at a small, for a smaller amount, I think.
Okay, um, is there not, is there not something to be said for sizing up for this? Like, okay, so it, it effectively is a more polarized line by just being a delay turn C bet in and of itself. Should that not inherently be larger size?
I like it. I, I'm agreeing with the larger size. I think Joey.
What are you representing? What are you representing? Check flop and bet the turn?
I would not bet there at all.
Are you, you're just checking through?
Yeah, what do you have? You have nothing in a multi-way pot.
After it went check, check, but it's a multi-way pot that's gone check, check, check.
Yeah, so I will say, okay, so even with, with top of range, with Ace Ace here, I will check at a non-insignificant percentage. Uh, when I have top of range, I'm taking, taking the same line with. Um, like, it's, I'm largely trying to polarize, right? Like, when I'm, when I'm betting here, yeah, I'm saying I have Ace Ace, I have King King. They didn't bet that's the flood with. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm repping top of range. I'm attempting to rep top of range.
Yeah, but that, this just doesn't do it. You have nothing.
Block King, Queen and Queen ten.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm not really concerned with my.
Hands that are instant. Okay, in general, your betting range here is good queens and spades.
On the turn?
I mean, in reality, I'm bet, like, if I check flop here, I'm betting pretty much hundred percent of range as a delay turn C bet with a polarized.
Multi-way?
Uh, yeah, with this dynamic.
To me, that's spewing.
Okay, okay, okay.
I'm with Joey.
Okay, okay.
I'm with.
So you just.
You gotta play more straightforward in multi-way pots.
And I was just gonna ask about that. So you would take like a more, almost like a face-up approach, where you're just kind of playing your equity straight up as it, as it comes to you?
Yes.
I mean, there's an exception here. I mean, so let me, let me say this. Let's say for, for some weird reason, you, well, no, let's say you open with pocket fours, which, I mean, you opened with King ten, so let's say you open with pocket fours. I'm just trying.
Yeah, I would have that open. I would.
Okay, so you open with pocket fours. Oh, oh, well, that's a bad example. No, disregard that example. Um.
Sixes.
Say you open with, um, six, seven suited. That's a, shit, there's a six, four, five, uh.
Four, five suited is an open there. There are four.
I'm just trying to figure out a hand that sucks. Like, let's say you open with, you know, um, seven, eight. Okay, and you get to the turn. What's the turn? Hopefully it doesn't come back. I don't get a draw. Okay, so you open with seven, eight suited. Right? I'm gonna bet, Joey might be right, don't bet anything, but I'm gonna bet seven, eight suited more than I'm gonna bet Kings. Because.
I'm betting a hundred percent of range at the same frequency. It's like, I'm not really looking at my hand so much in that spot.
Ball to a pot out of, out of position.
See, the thing is, you're, you're bluffing.
Range betting out of position is generally not a thing.
Okay, okay.
If you're betting six into ten, how often do you need them to fold?
Six into ten. Like, like thirty-five, forty percent?
Yeah, I'm guessing around forty percent.
Okay.
Okay.
Shocked I was that close, but sure.
How often do people fold?
Less than that.
Um.
Fifty percent of the time. I think this works.
Or more than that?
I think so. On this action, I think.
But.
On this action.
But the thing is, if each one folds fifty percent.
Oh, no, no, I meant both of them fold. I bet half the time both of them fold. That was my guess. I, I misunderstood what you, what your, your question was, Joey. If it's fit, if they each both fifty percent of the time, then that means seventy-five percent of the time, one of them calls.
And I think I do see where you're going here. Like, this combo that I'm holding, these are two cards that I want them to be having, right? So.
Yeah, you, you're, you're, you're bluffing into a low success situation. That's why when you bluff in a multi-way pot, you want odds to go, you want more equity to go with it, like a flush draw. This way you have dynamics.
I'd want that six of spades to be the Jack of Spades, basically.
Yeah, if that was the Jack of Spades, that would be, this would be a perfect, a good hand to deal with.
Okay, okay.
Well, so.
I, I see where you're coming from.
I mean, actually, yeah, so that's probably right. But again, the other thing you have to remember is, do you think any aces folding to your, um, to your bet? That's a big bet, but are you think any aces folding?
Yes.
Yes.
Aces that haven't made a hand, absolutely.
Yes. Maybe not.
And that's kind of what I'm targeting. I mean, like, there's a lot that I'm sort of targeting with the delay turn C bet, but that.
I just think you're much better betting a shittier hand than King ten.
Okay, okay, that's entirely, you guys make some great points. You really do.
And I think if it's a shittier hand with a flush draw, it's even better. So like that seven, eight that I talked. And, and I think if it's a shittier hand with a flush draw, it's even better. So like that seven, eight that I talked about. That's a, that's a, seven, eight of spades is a great bluffing hand.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Uh, yeah, so I'm not, I'm probably not paying enough attention to my actual combo. I'm just sort of taking the line with the position, uh, regardless, not observing the blocker effects enough. Cause that's sort of the line that'll take a lot if I, uh, miss my C bet, delay turn C bet large, and then I'm just gonna fire.
Well, that's fine, that's fine heads up.
Yeah, okay.
But.
Silly call from him too.
We'll count wide, he called you.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's supposed to fold. This is the problem with trying to bluff into fish in multi way pots.
Okay.
This is just, this is exactly why you don't do it. There's no way he should have called down with the sixes after that.
And this happens a lot, man. That's why I'm bringing this here. So I really, I do appreciate.
But I really do think one of the biggest, the biggest takeaways from this is, is this idea that you, range betting, just because everybody checks when you're out of position is. Is not something you should do.
Okay, okay.
You, you will never find, you'll never find a silver solution that range bets out of position in that scenario.
Style, I, I just, I just feel, uh, I feel like I'm doing something wrong when I'm playing face up. When it's just like, oh, I don't have much equity check. I don't have much more equity check. You know, I just, I feel like I'm playing very face up and that I can be exploited.
And I just go back to this, like when you're out of position, you're in a shitty spot and you just have to accept the position.
So, here, here is one thing, King, that I think.
Can't win every single pot, I guess.
Yeah, I think you can get one voice out of your head, which is in a multi way pot, you're supposed to pay, play face up.
Okay.
That's really awesome.
That, that, that's when we know. Now, here's a couple of other voices in your head for this, which is these, and this is Jonathan Little speaking, not me. So this is someone who has authority, someone who has, uh, credentials and a high win rate. Jonathan Little says. In a multi way pot, if you don't have it, someone else does.
Okay.
That's the first thing. Now, but he also said that in multi way pots, bluffs, you know, bluffs can be profitable. Um, you know, if no one shows an interest in the pot. And he was an example where no one showed an interest in the pot. So that's why I didn't hate it.
Okay.
Joey did, I didn't, um, and I must say I'm right, saying I didn't hate it, um.
Okay, so like there's.
Yeah.
Sorry.
You can just be more selective.
There's competing.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was gonna ask, basically, yeah.
Yeah.
So like the line, the logic wasn't horrible, but I just really could have chosen a better exact combo to do that with for the blocker effect, that play in the multi way pots.
And although, although the fact is, I like the fact that you're, that you blocked king, queen and queen ten. So I did like the fact. Top pair, as we saw when he called you with third pair. But the, the voice that you should get out of your head. So those two things, the competing things, if you don't have it, um, they do have it, but in a pot that's, you know, that no one is going for. That's a heads up, that's a, a jump ball, maybe you should try to take it. The one, those are, those are competing things that should be in your head. The thing that you give me out of your head is in a multi way pot, I'm, I feel I'm just playing too face up.
Okay, no, understood. I'm, I'm going to observe that for sure.
Okay, great. All right, cool.
I have one more kind of along the similar lines, but it's one where I, uh, chose to C bet flop, but I ended up checking turn.
Okay, before you show it, I wanted to check one thing. Has everybody gotten to show one hand? Is there anybody who has a sing, who hasn't shown that wants to share a hand? Okay, you're up for a second hand then. We'll, we'll do, we'll round the second hands.
Okay, and it's kind of in the same, uh, in the same vein as this last one here. It's reminiscent, anyway, let me pull that up. Uh, yeah, it's this one.
Is that your pre flop raising range we see in the middle there? Just pairs.
That's my C bet range.
That's how I, no, that's how I, uh, drilled combinatorics into my head. Note the number of combos with each, each one there.
Okay.
Um, okay, so we got EP limper, LJ limper, whatever. Um, standard sizing, I believe, I think, uh, yeah, in, in position, you can size down a bit.
No, no, that's, I, I, the, the natural size here would be four point four.
Okay, okay.
I think you're right being taken out there.
Well, don't they, like, you can go up half a big blind out of position, down half a big blind in position or whatever.
Nope, four point four, four point four, and then up a full big in position.
Scotty, that is, that is J, four point four is JL's answer, but a lot of coaches will just say go four X.
Okay.
Okay.
Good enough.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, we are with.
All good so far.
Jonathan Little, and so that's how I play.
Okay.
How to play.
Uh, so he calls, uh, queen eight, six, I raised the limper. Now, this is another queen mid low-ish board. This time I elected to C bets and I went for like a third, a third of sizing. Um, I believe this is C betting more than checking, is it not?
I think so.
This is.
Yeah, we're in the wild here. None of us have looked at theory, I mean.
So you opened on the.
That I know.
Yeah, but, uh, no, sorry. Low jack, early position limps, I raise on the button and he calls.
My exploit against limpers is I, I so raise and then C bet small.
Yep.
Okay, so what I did here.
Yep, and this.
It's gonna be a range C bet against if you opened and a big blind called you.
The, and that's what I was thinking, okay, okay. So we do get the call, um, and it goes check. Now, after he calls my bet here, I think he's very heavily weighted towards a lot of queen X combos. I chose not to continue, because when I continue on this turn, I'm basically gonna have to fire a triple barrel. Um.
I don't think this is a good.
I normally am going to be bluffing in position, but this is just kind of one of those spots. He's playing twenty one V pep. I just felt like he's very heavily weighted towards, uh, queen X combo.
Yeah, plus the three of clubs is not good for your range, so.
No, no, exactly, exactly. It's total non, yeah, exactly.
I think that's a check behind.
Okay, and this is where my major question comes in. When this ace peels on the river, which is obviously so favorable for me. Um, I bet, I bet a hundred percent.
I bet twenty.
You overbet?
Uh, yeah, so I don't agree with that.
So I'm mainly asking about these lines where it's like flop, bet, I end up checking turn for whatever reason. But like this ace comes in, which is very favorable for me. I thought betting a hundred percent pot here was very, very credible for giving me the ace.
Okay, betting large is something you will see on this board, because the heuristic is when you're in possession. And it goes check, check, and the value of top pair changes with the new card. The in position player will have large bets. However.
Okay.
After he checks, your king jack has a really good chance of winning just checking behind. You have much better bluffs than this particular hand.
Yeah, this.
Okay, I mean, what do you block? What do you, you're trying to get rid of the queen, right?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. Yeah, and this is like a spot where I was kind of, where I feel like I was playing it kind of face up, but in an, in an appropriate way. I mean, face up in relation to what the board is showing here. He likely has a queen on the flop, total brick on the turn. I chose to check behind. But when this drastically, or when this, uh, equity shifting card comes in here, or more accurately.
Why did you?
It's very favorable to my range.
I. Why did you pick pot?
Uh, that's kind of just like my standard, my standard sizing for like a large bet, like a polarized bet, like I.
What's your goal is to fold the queen? Your goal is to fold the queen, right?
Yeah.
So do you think a ten big blind bet would fold the queen?
I think less often than a sixteen big blind bet.
Well, okay, but do you think it will fold the queen?
He answered.
Not necessarily, I mean.
He thinks the.
I don't.
What about a fourteen big blind bet? I'm just trying to find the.
Maybe, well, like, what's the point of, like, uh, like nitpicking about fourteen versus sixteen?
Well, cause I actually think it's a difference that would fold the queen against a bad player.
You, sorry, you think a twelve or a four?
My fault. Um, you, there's two types of players. There's like, I gotta see it because I have a queen, but if this guy, like, let's say he played queen ten. I think he's like, God, I'm losing to good queens and I'm losing to aces now. I'm done and I'm feeling that way. At ten big blinds or sixteen big blinds, I think you're wasting six blinds. That's why I bring it up. And then you said no, so I started going up, which is why.
Okay, okay, I got you.
Let, I think you're over, you're, you're narrowing him to a queen too much.
I'm not dead set that he has a queen. I mean, like, I understand.
No, but I wanna ask, ask the question, what does he limp call pre flop and then call a C bet on the flop? So I think there's three categories. I think there's weak queens, you know, uh, and, and I will say, it is noteworthy. You block queen, jack and queen, king.
Okay, 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 sure.
Okay, then there's lower pairs. He's got a pair of sevens or, you know, and, and he's just not willing to let it go. And it's ace hot. He's got ace ten maybe, and he just made an ace. I think a lot of his flop floats are ace high. So, uh, I, I also, I think if you wanna bluff here, I think your bluff target is the low pairs. I don't think you can get them. I, I think it's more likely you get them off of, you know, the pair of sevens, the pair of fives. Then certainly you're not getting them off an ace and you're not getting them off queen. So I think I would probably just not bluff this, and if I were, I think I might go smaller just, and just not tar, target the lower pairs.
Okay, can I?
I like that. Go ahead.
In the solver, I suspect we will have large bets. Because the general heuristic is when the previous street goes check, check. And the board changes, the in position player gets over bets.
Okay.
So we're gonna have some value hand. We're gonna have ace, king here that wants to go twenty.
Okay, now.
We have to have some bluffs that are going to be willing to go the twenty with it.
Okay.
Um, I just think that this hand is a poor choice to bluff. Um, cause if we're betting range, we're gonna have other hands, uh, like Jack ten.
Mm-hmm. I would take this exact same line with a hundred percent of range that makes it to the stage in the hand.
So, so the same comment as before, I mean.
Yeah, you can't, you can't just do range. That's, that's a tournament thing.
No, I, ma- maybe I'm explaining it wrong. Okay, so like, and when you're explaining the over bets here, like when I'm thinking about sixteen versus twenty. Versus twelve, like to me, those are all large bets. Like when you're, when we're this deep here. I mean, a hundred percent pot to the chip, population will call that more often than they will like some weird number. That's why I bet kind of weird numbers when I wanna get folds and stuff. Um, I don't think that population at this low of stakes is really looking at like. Sixteen, sixteen big blinds versus twenty big blinds versus twelve big blinds. Like this is kind of the same, same bet effectively. And I would actually group their queen X in with the same category of hands as their pocket eights, their pocket nines. I would classify those as marginal holdings and marginal holdings should fold versus the siding sizing in my mind.
Yeah, I think, I, I think that's clear and I, I think that what we've, we've heard on this is Joey's view is. That this ace allows for our range for big bets, including over bets. And so, let's put some bluffs in there, but king, jack is not the best hand for the bluff, because king, jack has showdown value. Um, Josh.
Just put this, I just put this in the solver. All of the bets are seventy seven percent or larger.
Uh, but, but, but you, but against.
Are you seeing king, jack?
No, king, jack is a pure check, because it's one of the best, it's the best non paired hand.
Right.
It's too high up in range to bluff.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
You beat seven, nine without it, you beat, you beat the seven, nine and, and, you know, without anything. But Joey, how did you run it? He, he, there was an open limp.
I just wanted, but I ran it button versus big blind.
Okay, so not exact, but.
It's not exact, but.
It's in, it's in.
He has a wide range, but the big blind has a wide range.
Yeah, yeah.
Joey, I think that's a really good point on the, on the sizing here. I, I think the observation that you and I are both making, which is king high is too strong. To, uh.
I, I do reckon, I do recall thinking about that at the time here, um, but I just, in this exact spot, it's just like. I think I can very, very credibly rep an ace. I mean.
Yep, now, now let's see what he, you know, what did he call you with? The ace.
Which I did not expect him to turn over.
What do we win?
Played it well, actually, because, you know, he's gonna bet some of his aces and check some of his aces. So, and so I think, you know, King, you, you actually make an observation that is correct, which is you can rep an ace. You just, just because you can rep an ace doesn't mean you do it all the time, which is why then you select the hands that make sense to do it with. And because King high has showdown value against a miss, you don't need to do that. You take, you, you take your bluffs to weaker hands.
Okay, and also this some, has something in common with the last hand as well. I think that was a king, ten, that's sort of two perfect cards that I really want him to be holding. So that makes the argument for.
Yeah, that's.
Bluffing. Just goes back to that thing where it's like, oh, I feel like I'm face up exploitable, but I'm, I'm trying to get past that, so.
I, I wanna make another point, like, and, and I can't describe it, the situation perfectly, but if the, if you were the out of position player in the ace game. And it, and, and it looks like everybody's weak because there's this checking going on, you can't bluff the ace. Because he's like, because there's so much ace in both ranges. Aces, and, you know, um. That, somebody once told me that's called a bad red bluff, which is, you, they have it, they, it connects with them. It's too much for them to, for you to bluff. The fact that he checked it probably makes it more credible, but I would never bluff this out of position when the ace comes.
I think my critical error was also undervaluing the number of aces that he could have. I, I did. I thought he was much, much, much more likely to have a small middling pocket pair, queen, jack, queen, ten, something along those lines. Much more likely than something like an ace five offsuit from the position that he.
It's incredibly hard to range a limp caller.
Exactly, so many of these games, there's so many of them too. Like this is NL twenty five and I'll play NL ten as well. Well, it's just so many limpers, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, and you know what? NL twenty five and NL ten, again, depending on the site, and I am not a online guy, so I could be full of shit here. But, uh, is, you should be skewing a lot more towards value. Your bluffs are gonna work a lot less. People look you up.
Yeah.
And your money is gonna be made by value.
It's usually regs that I have tagged as regs that I'm usually looking to make bluffs against. If they're unknowns or if they're fishes, then I just, I take the cautious, cautious side.
Okay.
Well, what's?
Uh, forty three hands, twenty one V pep, thirty two PFR, or sorry, twenty PFR, seven, three bet. Pretty reasonable tag, tag stats, pretty textbook tag.
Not a bit, no, it's a bit loose. Thirty two.
No, no, he's twenty one V pep, or sorry, that's twenty one RFI, it's thirty two V pep. I mixed those ones up.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, he's thirty two V pep.
Loose and a, loose and a little more.
One, you called ace five, so now you know he's a, now you know he's a fish.
Um, yeah. It looks like a linear RFI range too.
Well, first of all, if anybody ever opened limbs, they immediately get my pink tag.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
No, absolutely.
So earlier.
What does a pink tag mean, dare I ask?
It's a green tag for me, but, yeah.
I had, then, then they're also in the running to get like my light blue tag, which is well.
Right. So going back.
I use the stoplight.
Stop, okay, going back earlier, who was it who said that he, that the hands most common for him to check, call the flop with? Were small pairs like five, sevens and ace high. Who was it who said that?
That was me, I got one right.
Nice job, nice job, Matthew, on the ace high. Um, whoever, uh, when you were talking about bluffing. Somebody said bluffing out of position here. We're in position. Was that just making sure that, that was just, you meant to say? Did you mean to say something different than you said? I think it was Josh who said it about the.
Say it again, say what I said again?
I think you, right at the end, when you were saying the king hot, the king, jack is, you know, your highest non paired hand. And you said something about bluffing it out of, out of position. We're in position, so I just wanted to clarify what you meant.
Oh, no, I was using the example that, um, I, if I, if you take, the point of this is. When the ace comes and using that as a scare card, in position makes sense, out of position it doesn't, because there's just too many hands that connect. The truth of the matter is, despite the fact that he did show with aces, the fact that he didn't bet it does reduce the number of aces in his hand. Right? He's gonna bet some of his stronger aces for value. Here, he, he carried it through and gotcha, but my point is you can't do, you can't, even, you can't, even if it was a bluffing hand like. Seven, uh, there's an eight on the board, you know what, I can, four, five.
Nine, seven, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, even if you have a bluffing hand there, you can't do it out of position, because the ace is actually a good card for his run.
Yeah, okay, okay, that makes sense.
And, and then the last thing was, the, the last thing was when King, you were saying, I, I, you, he had, I have the hands he want. I have the cards I want him to have. I wanted to have a king, I wanted to have a queen. I wanted a jack, and I'm unsure of why. Meaning you think that if he has a king, jack here, he'll call because it wraps around the queen? Because it gives him a backdoor.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just talking about, uh, like blocking.
What are you blocking? Cause I think you have good blockers for your bluff. I think your bluff is bad, because you have king, jack and it has showdown value. But I think it's good that you block king, queen and queen, jack.
Um, yeah, okay, so wait, I guess, I guess he wouldn't, he wouldn't be calling so much with the, uh. With those cards. Okay, no, I, I, I see what you're saying. I just, I'm, I got.
So let's take a look. You block, you block ten, jack, which you, which is an instant, which is an insta fold. Because he might call ten, jack as an instant, as a, as an inside straight draw. And you block king, jack, which he. And you block king jack, which he might call because it wraps the queen.
I just kind of meant, I want him to have those two cards to like increase the likelihood that he doesn't have a made hand that I can make a bluff that would get through, but it's like.
I think.
Actually, looking at the solver, that it likes bluffing fours, fives and sevens on the river.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I can see that. That makes sense. That makes a lot of sense.
Four, king four, jack seven, ten seven, nine seven.
But not pockets.
And that's kind of where I was going towards with that.
Like all cards wrapping around the middle cards.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. Yeah, and I just meant not having that king jack. So it's like, it's more likely that he has, he has the unmade, unmade hand and my bluff will get through.
Yeah, just imagine like the, the river card was a jack and you had ace king. You have the best non paired hand, so you.
I would not bet ace king if that river was a jack. Definitely not.
This is the same identical situation.
Yeah, you're right. I, I see it completely now. Yeah, I understand.
That is a really good way to put that, Joey.
Yeah, it's brilliant. I really like that. You just swapped the uh, top card, basically. Or the uh, the jack. Yeah, I got it. I got you. Cool, appreciate that.
Excellent. Um, if anybody wants to do a second hand, I'm gonna go away. I'm gonna make Larry the host here.
Yeah, I have to leave too.
Okay, in that case.
I'm wrapping. It's been a long time, so.
Okay.
Session.
All right, see you guys. Thanks.
Perfect.
Sweet. See you next Monday.
Thanks, everybody.
See you next Monday. Make sure, let me check here. Yep, next Monday is, I'm in Denmark. Yeah, I'm sure I can do it. Okay, bye.
Awesome. See you, guys.
Bye bye. Thanks a lot. I learned a lot.
Thank you.